Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Norfolk Board of Selectmen. It is Tuesday, June 25th at approximately 7:00 PM. My name is Kevin Calcutt. I am joined here by my fellow board members, Chris Weider, Cece Van Tyne. We're also joined tonight by our Town Administrator, Blithe Robinson, and our Executive Assistant, Nancy Langlois. As a reminder, this meeting is being audio and video recorded consistent with the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It will be rebroadcast in NCTV's government cable channel as well as uploaded to NCTV's YouTube channel. With that, would everybody please join me for a Fledge of Allegiance?
Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All three weeks between meetings seems like an eternity now after doing one every other week.
It does.
And our agenda kind of shows that.
Did you miss us?
I did. I did.
I know you did.
Blithe, would you mind taking us through our agenda this evening?
Sure. The action items, first one was please consider holding a joint election with the Board of Assessors to fill a vacant position. Please consider making appointments to various town boards and committees. Please consider appointing Peter Petruzik as interim fire chief. Please consider approval of year-end transfers. Please consider declaring a state of water supply conservation. Please consider authorizing the chair to award a bid for office supplies and paper to various bidders for fiscal year 2020. Please consider approving private street names as proposed for the Village of Norfolk Development. And please consider contract amendments for the H Olive Day Roof Contract. Discussion items include a presentation from the Town Planner and the Charles River Watershed Association on the DEP Water Management Grant. Consider comments from the owner of 194 Main Street regarding town process to enforce bylaws. Please discuss the process to address, repair, or replace the fire station. Please discuss the closeout process for the police station. Please consider comments from the owner of 63 North Street regarding renovation of this property. And there are a number of warrants that have been assigned that need to be approved, followed by approval of minutes from the late May meeting.
Very good. Thank you so much. So I believe that we are not able to execute our first item this evening. Is that correct?
That's correct. The Board of Assessors weren't able to put up their posting within the 48 hours ahead. So we've discussed with them moving this to the July 9th meeting. The good news is they don't have a meeting planned between now and then, so they can run with two members until July 9th.
There's also no action is needed, no motion, nothing. How efficient. Item number two. Wow, this one is not going to be as short. So we have our appointments for our various boards and committees in town. They are extremely organized in color-coded fashion. However, it still looks like it's going to take a second to get there.
So color is the order of how to read this. Blue is ones that the board took care of at the last meeting. Green are new appointment recommendations that have come in. Yellow are reappointments. And there are a number of letters in your packet from various board chairs and people about those reappointments. And gray are the ones where we don't have anybody who has expressed an interest in serving and we have no people to fill those positions. So we would be looking for you to vote on the green and the yellow if that's the board's preference. And I don't know whether you want to take them as a group or some you want to pull out and discuss. And Nancy and Marie have been doing the lion's share of the work on this, so if there are any specifics, Nancy may have them a little better detailed than I do.
And if somebody had expressed interest, or multiple people had submitted interest in a single position, that would have been noted here as well?
Right. If there was more than one candidate for one vacancy. Yeah, so that hasn't happened.
That is so surprising.
Very good. All right, so I'll leave this to the board. Would you like to go through each individual board? Would you like to take all in green first and go all in yellow? Is there anything in particular that you would like to open for discussion?
So as I understand it, the yellow are people who are willing to take on an additional year, three years, whatever their term is. They've already been involved and they're just up. And nobody's vying for their spot.
Correct.
And they want to continue volunteering. And then the green are people who have not been in those positions before but are willing to volunteer and nobody is vying for their spot.
Correct. And they were probably, most of the green would have been, come from recommendations.
From the boards themselves. So I would suggest that, I liked how you put it, maybe vote for the green first because they're a different tranche of people than the yellow and then vote for the yellow. I don't myself need to vet them any further than the fact that they actually want to help. And the boards want them. I don't.
Right. But I would point out that the ZBA appointments, one person is willing to continue to serve, Chris may know more about these than I do, till someone else is appointed because they don't want to leave a vacancy but don't want to stay. And another person on the list, the town has had some interaction with on a particular issue, and I just bring that to board's attention, however you want to handle that. The one listed in green.
Does anyone else want to weigh in on how you want to handle that?
I think why don't we go through the green first and start there? I think the first one, we obviously want to appoint our Town Administrator.
That would help.
Would help, wouldn't it? So why don't we do the greens first and then we'll go to the yellows? And obviously the yellows are people who have already served and would like to continue. So I think that makes it pretty easy. So I think the greens are the only ones really of an issue.
So vote on yellow and then talk about green?
I would do green first and then vote on yellow. Make it easy.
Talk about green though, not vote on green. That's all I meant.
Sure.
All right.
So we'll go board by board then, committee by committee, or in bulk?
We only have four greens, so it's pretty easy, I think.
No, we don't have four greens.
You could say all but hold on a particular one if that helps you to move it, you know, if someone wanted to hold a particular one out, you could vote on all the others but one or two, you know, and then go back to those.
Or just, there's only eight, maybe just roll down the names and ask what people want to say, right? So nobody feels, we don't single anyone out as the only one who got held.
Sure, that's another strategy.
Then they're like, why did they hold me? Not that there's anything wrong with being held. It's the rumor. So.
All right. Who would like to make a motion then as we work our way through the green listed names?
So you want to make a motion to work your way through the names? Are you asking who will move that the person be appointed once we've vetted them?
No. Who would move that we appoint them as we go through this list?
Oh, I'll move once, I love moving. But we need to vet them first. So do you want to talk about Robert Shannon?
I think we're going to have to do each one individually if you're going to do it that way.
Right. That's what you wanted to do, right?
So I think you've got to go Robert Shannon. Motion to approve, second.
And then you talk about it. All right. So first one, an affordable housing trust. The person who is willing to come on the committee is Robert Shannon. I move that we appoint Robert Shannon to that committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So no discussion?
Didn't sound like it.
The Conservation Committee, the person who's interested in coming on the committee who's never been there before, Alan Finney. I move to appoint Mr. Alan Finney to this committee.
Second.
Any discussion?
None for me.
I think Alan's on the Water Department. I think he'd be a valuable asset to the Conservation Committee and I think it would be a good learning experience for him as well.
Further discussion?
None for me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving down, the next green, there's two, but I'll go first. On the Energy Committee, the first person I move to appoint to the Energy Committee would be Anthony Kennedy.
Second.
Further discussion?
None for me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I further move on the Energy Committee to appoint John Kent to said committee.
Second.
Further discussion?
You're not going to get any.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Insurance Advisory Committee. A gentleman interested in coming on the committee is Edward Hanks. I move that we appoint Mr. Edward Hanks to the Insurance Advisory Committee.
Second.
Further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye.
Town Administrator, ooh, tough one.
Yep.
I move that we appoint Blithe Robinson to a three-year term as the Town Administrator.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we only got two more. ZBA, I move that we appoint Michael Brogan to the ZBA.
Second.
All right, so I have to have discussion on this one and I apologize for that.
Why? That's why we're here.
So we are currently in litigation with Mr. Brogan. Is that correct regarding his property? All right? And we're in the process of evaluating and establishing an understanding in terms of what he's allowed to execute as part of his property. Is that correct?
Going through the court process about what that will result in, yes.
But the town is a defendant in that action, is that correct? Does anybody see that as a conflict?
Well, would he be recusing himself for anything that impacted him or his parcel of land? Right? Is it a conflict? I guess, I'm just asking, is the question more specific to just his piece of land? I think that's obvious. Or is it more broad that if somebody is suing the town, however limited the issue, they can't, it would be a conflict for them to work for the town, right? Albeit uncompensated. Is that what you're asking?
It is. And he was actually employed by the town prior to his court case, correct? I don't know. That seems like there'd be a larger scale conflict there. Chris, what do you think?
Well, what's the conflict? I mean, I think a landowner, anybody in town, has the right to protect their property. So everybody has the right to defend themselves. Mr. Brogan was the HVAC mechanical inspector for the town. And due to his court situation, the town removed him from that position. Whether that be right or wrong, I don't think any of us were on the board at that time other than yourself.
I was.
And I don't know the reasons behind it. He is a zoning inspector for the town of Tiverton, Rhode Island. He is on a course to be a building commissioner in the state of Massachusetts. I think he brings valuable insight in those areas and they are his expertise. I would certainly not want to prejudice anybody in this town who has to protect their land rights in this town from being on a board. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Am I allowed to inquire as to what the issue is that's under litigation?
Yeah, it's public.
Right. So I just don't know. What's, I mean, because sometimes people are suing for things that the town may think is not legitimate, but your average landowner or citizen would be like, oh yeah, I would sue for the same thing. And sometimes, just like civil rights violations, sometimes there's a violation and sometimes there isn't. What's the issue?
At its core, Mr. Brogan is looking to execute certain events on his property that involve rioting and shooting, which were deemed as a nuisance to the neighbors and also brought into question if he's allowed to execute such function on his property under zoning.
Okay. All right. Yeah, so I do agree that generally you have an absolute right, so long as you're compliant with Rule 11 sanctions and all of the other strictures against just suing for the sake of suing, to sue the town. But I also think sometimes you put yourself, people can put themselves in positions where they may know the rules and just put themselves in that position and then sue. And in this instance, I would agree with you that I think that it's currently a conflict given the amount of litigation.
In that case, he is up for a vote, so we do make the motion to vote, correct?
I already made it.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Onto the next item.
Planning Board, I'm going to massacre his name and I apologize. Peter Svaldi for a one-year term on the planning board. Did I get it even close?
It was close.
It was close.
So moved.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Congratulations, Peter. All right. That's the greens.
Oh, we got to do the yellow. I closed it up.
Onto the yellows.
Should we just read them en banc or move, or do you want to just do it just how I just did with each, so that people, maybe it's better I just do it as I did so that people, people who are scoring at home know what it is that everybody's applied for?
Yeah.
All right. So I move that Kevin Roach be reappointed to the Corrections Advisory Committee.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I move that James Wilkinson and Lawrence Sullivan be reappointed to the Energy Committee.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I move that Sandra Paquette, Gail Sullivan, and Mary Pine be reappointed to three-year terms at the Historical Commission.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I move that James Dyer and Neil Cross be appointed to the Insurance Advisory Committee, reappointed to the Insurance Advisory Committee.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I move that Patricia St. Aubin be reappointed to the Norfolk County Advisory Board.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I move that Richard McCarthy be reappointed to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for your appointment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I change it up and tricked everybody, huh?
I know. I was like, wait, what am I doing? I move that Susan Jacobson be reappointed as parking clerk.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You had your moment to object there, Sue.
I know. She looked like she was thinking about it. Her eyes were like, wait a minute. I move, swap, what's swap? What is swap? What's it stand for? Does it stand for something or is it?
Perhaps our appointee would be willing to share?
Well, there's two.
Southwest area planning, it's a sub-region from Metropolitan Area Planning Council.
So it's the southwestern area planning council? Okay. Because it just says swap and I want to be meticulous for the people at home. I move that Richard McCarthy and Robert Nicodemus be reappointed to the Southwest Area Planning Council.
Second.
Further discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
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 There's nobody in the town council, but it's yellow. Is there?
I would recommend that the board reappoint the firm.
Okay.
And that gives the board the latitude to work with whatever council at the firm the town, the board thinks is appropriate for itself.
Gotcha. That makes sense. Okay, so I move that we reappoint for a one-year term, Murphy, Hessy, Toomey, and Lehane as town council.
Second.
Further discussion?
Okay, now in our packet, we just received something from Brooks and Drenas. Well, how does that relate to this?
They're looking to, I would guess that letter went out to very many communities in the area that they're working in to look for new business. And they just decided to write that to us. I would suggest if the board wanted to change town council, what we would most appropriately do is send out an RFP and invite firms to submit their credentials and go through a process for the board to decide. That does take a little while. We certainly can do that and I would suggest we reappoint this firm for now and we decide for some period of time and we decide whether we want to go through that process or not and then we could unappoint them if we wanted to. But I think you want to not have a gap in council at this point and we take this in a two-step process if that's the direction you'd like to go.
That makes sense to me. Makes sense to you? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 I move that William Cochran be reappointed to a one-year term as the town's veterans agent.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I move that Joseph Sebastiano and Midora Champagne be reappointed to five-year terms, oh, wait, let me scratch that. Joseph Sebastiano be reappointed to a five-year term on the ZBA.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I move that Midora Champagne be reappointed as an associate member for a one-year term to the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that Paul Tarrio be reappointed to the CPC.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 And finally, I move that David Lapointe be reappointed to the Design Review Board.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Cece.
So at this point, we'll refresh all of the vacancies that we have and try to drum up some more interest in those so that we can, as those come up, we'll bring them back to you. Otherwise, this won't stay on your agenda unless there's some action for you to take.
And very quickly, thank you to everybody who volunteers for these boards and committees and would absolutely come to a standstill without you. Thank you. All right. Next item on our list, consider appointing Peter Petrusik as interim fire chief. I think this is pretty cut and dry. Is there any other considerations we need to discuss?
The current chief is leaving at the end of the week, so I think the timing is appropriate.
Appropriate.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll do it. It's written out here, which I love. I move that the board vote to appoint Peter Petruzik as interim fire chief beginning June 29th, 2019.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 As of late last week, we had 11 candidates that had expressed interest in the position from the advertising that we've done. And so at our next meeting, we'll be able to start to think about, you know, the timing of, the exact timing of the process to review those and interview and hiring the firm to do the assessment center and so on. So moving right along.
Very good. Awesome. All right. Next item on our list is to please consider the approval of year-end transfers. Do we have some background, Blithe?
Sure. So in the last two months of each fiscal year and the first 15 days of the next, communities are allowed to make transfers between various accounts because under state law, you cannot end the fiscal year with any account in a negative balance. Generally Norfolk, as most towns do, take care of larger transfers at town meetings. And then the ones, as the year comes to a close and you're starting to understand exactly what your expenditures will be, you can move money from ones to the other as they were voted at town meeting. So if, we budget for both salaries and expense in each department, so you can't over expend either one of those. But any sub-accounts within it, say expenses includes office supplies and fuel and electricity, you can over expend one of those within there as long as you don't go over expenses overall. So what the Finance Director has proposed is that we need to transfer a total of $91,696.68 and it would come from five accounts. The full amount of the Advisory Board reserve, which hasn't been touched since it was replenished at the fall, is that the fall timing this year or was? I don't recall if we had to change it in the fall or not. Wasn't here. We have a fair amount of money in highway salaries because of unfilled positions. We have some money in the maintenance for the police station mech, a small amount from an elder affairs grant, and a large amount of $1.68 in a trust. And that, all those dollars would go to the larger list at the bottom where we have shortfalls. Salaries in our own office due to all the changes in staff in the last year, the hiring of a recruiter for the search process for the town administrator, town council expenses, and you can go down the list. I would point out that the list we had given you in your packet was for $102,000 and some change. This number has come down because the town planner and Finance Director sat down together and realized that the Conservation Commission legal expenses were not as high as they had thought they would be. And so it went from 17.5 down to 5. So, yep, so there are definitely accounts in other areas that will end with balances in them. Those will flow back to free cash at the end of the year. I can't, without the history, I'm not sure if this is a large number or a small number from year to year. But I was guessing it's pretty typical of things that come up. And the board needs to approve it tonight and then tomorrow night, the Advisory Committee meeting is meeting to approve them as well. It's a two-step process in any community, Selectmen and the Finance or Advisory Committee. So they have a quorum for tomorrow night to do the same.
Very good. Does anybody have any other questions?
Blithe, how come, what was the 13,000 that came, that was going to come out of the Finance Department that isn't now? That seems like a lot of money to be a miscue on. What happened there?
That's the town, you mean the town council money?
Originally, we were told that 13,295 was coming out of the Finance Department and in the latest transfer, it's not showing up. Is that?
It was determined it wasn't needed when the amount of the conservation went down.
So if they don't spend that 13, it'll go to free cash?
Exactly. And for example, the amount of monies turned back by highway salaries is far greater than 32,000. I think it was more in the order of 90. We didn't need that to end the year in a positive and other accounts, so we only transferred, you know, what was necessary from there. The goal being turn it all back because as you know, we tend to use free cash for funding capital needs, for things that come up during the year, balancing the budget. And so the goal is to spend what we need to to get the job done, but not spend any more than that, turn it back and have it available for the town to reallocate as it sees fit later on.
And how are we, how do we shortfall on salaries? To me, salaries is a pretty basic item.
Well, I mean, things happen.
And we have one, two, three, four, five. We have five columns.
Right.
That all have underages in salaries.
So in select persons, you had a change of staff, administrator going, but on the payroll longer than he was actually here, do an agreement with the board. I made the decision to bring in a temporary person when the executive assistant moved to Affordable Housing and we needed some support to get work done. In recreation, that was a decision made, I guess, by the former administrator to honor a request by the Recreation Commission last fall to update the salary for the Recreation Director based on a salary survey of that position. So that didn't get handled at a fall town meeting and, but it got paid, so it needs to be covered.
Does it have to be handled at town meeting or?
It could be handled at town meeting or it could be handled here.
Here being with us board?
Yes. I mean, because you can make year-end transfers in the last two months of the year, it's more I mean, because you can make year-end transfers in the last two months of the year, it's more of a policy and judgment call how you want to handle those things in the future. I mean, it could have been brought to that December town meeting and asked to approve it then, but it's a matter of, are there things that you really think are important to bring to town meeting for the voters to vote on, or things that you think the select board and advisory should handle in their purview at the end of the year? In COA, I understand it was additional, some additional hours for some part-time staff, and it was hiring a new director at a higher salary than the director that left. I can't comment on that process, but that's what I understood what happened. So I think, you know, in some cases, you have people who leave and aren't replaced, and so you turn money back, and other times where you're faced with a hiring process that causes you to need to spend more than you had planned for the year. I mean, I think there's ebbs and flows that happen. In dispatch, it's simply because we didn't cut over to the mech on the time point we thought we would, so we had to pay our own staff longer than we had planned. If that had all gone according to plan, you wouldn't see that line item on here. So I think that for the most part, these are things that have just happened throughout the year. Town council expenses, the need to deal with matters that come up. That's generally, if we're doing a good job of budgeting, this list is usually fairly small, but things happen in communities throughout the year.
So I'm going to go back to the recreation salaries, just as an example.
Sure.
So that money was paid, but it was never approved by the board or a town meeting?
I would say that's correct. It was, as I understood, a decision by, the rec commission approached the administrator and said, "We think this person should be compensated at a higher rate based on what area towns pay and whatever salary survey was done." And I believe he determined that was appropriate and allowed it, but didn't ask or tell any, maybe didn't tell anybody that that was going to be a budget impact at some point.
That's my question.
Yeah, I think that's.
Is that an allowed use of the town administrator? Should he have been allowed to have done that without the approval of the board selectmen?
I think, yes, he's allowed to. I think, I think what I would suggest is that on a going-forward basis, there ought to be more transparency about, hey, this has come forward and this is what I proposed, this is what I'm going to do about it, and this is what it means. I would suggest there should be a more structured process by which these changes are made, but it's hard for me to comment on the past because I don't have, you know, all that history. I think your question is valid. I think it's a matter of us discussing how you'd like to see these happen in the future, how all of us would like to see them happen so that there's an understanding by all boards and committees and non-union employees about how this happens, and it isn't a surprise for anyone at any point versus hiring processes that are a little harder to say exactly, you know, you're budgeting this and that's exactly what you could hire someone for. That isn't always as easy to project.
That's interesting. I think Chris raises a great point, but I certainly get, right, like I get that we all, every year, we set a budget, and just like every industry, sometimes the, you know, we manage to tighten our belts and we don't spend enough, or somebody, we need to hire a second person, whatever the intervening things are. But I do like the idea, I don't like the idea of a lack of transparency where just one individual just sort of says, "Oh, sure." And maybe that's not what happened.
Yeah, and I may not be describing it accurately.
Because we weren't here either, but it does seem that while you don't necessarily cost money to call a town meeting, so I don't think you necessarily want to have, you know, more than, you're spring, you're fall, and, you know, you sort of hold in abeyance your special for things like losing prison mitigation money and like emergencies like that, because it does cost money. But certainly, we know that we at least have two per year. You can, maybe the concept of bundling or having things brought to the selectmen, or to the selectmen and the advisory, like there's some check or balance if we're trying to keep, you know, run a lean budget as opposed to sort of this, at least, I think, perception that in the past, and it could be strictly a perception, that it was sort of an open checkbook for perhaps all really, really good reasons, but it felt like, did anybody ask, or was it just, oh, it's just, you know, it's just a few more dollars.
Well, I think.
And a few more dollars, just keep adding.
Right.
I think the other thing that I would like to see happen, if we can afford to do so in the fall, is when things like this come up where there's a one-off, a department wants to make an adjustment because they think a position is behind the market, is a symptom to me that our system might need to be looked at again. I mean, I believe, if I'm correct, that our, we haven't had a complete pay classification plan done since the early 2000s. While we've been increasing salaries each year, and hopefully that keeps us with the market, there is the possibility that we get out of step with that, and then you have people coming to ask. And so I think it's good housekeeping to do those every seven, eight, nine years to make sure you're on track and you lessen the possibility that someone comes in and says, "Hey, I'm not being compensated fairly. I like that to be looked at." Because if you do it for one, then you have others possibly saying, "Well, how about me?" And then you start to have, you know, your structure may become looser.
Interesting.
Than it should. So, you know, ideally, a community would do it maybe every five years. I don't think it's really that necessary, but I think it's been too long, and I think it could provide us benefits to make sure that we are being, we're paying our employees appropriately, but we're not ahead of the market, we're not behind the market, and the board could have a good discussion about where do we, you know, what percentile, where do we want to be as an employer, you know, to, in overall compensation. So we're getting a little off-topic, I'm sorry about that, but I think it's worth discussing in the future.
And it's all relevant, too, but I think at its core, what we've established is, for instances such as this, I think that we would prefer at the very least that it come before the board, before we get to a point where.
I think we should talk about that because in Norfolk, we don't have a personnel board, you know, those things are left to the town administrator and the HR director. I think there needs to be some very clear understanding about what the board wants to know about and what it's, and for me, I want to make sure that you're not surprised. So I would want to tell you about these things coming. I've been approached by another employee about a change, and I haven't dealt with that yet for various reasons.
Right.
And in part, but from what, for the reasons I've just stated. So I think that's, I think that's where I'd like to start, and because I don't think we necessarily need a committee. We have professionals who can, who support us. It's a matter of having the transparency, having the process, having everyone understand how this is going to work and when you ask and when you don't, and how that would be decided so that it isn't a surprise. I don't think you want to be in a position of having an employee salary determined at town meeting. I think that is something that would concern me a lot.
Yeah.
I agree.
That would be not great.
No.
And have these salary changes been incorporated in the FY '20 budget?
Yes, they have.
They're already included in there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Does that satisfy your concern, though, looking at the process by which these types of things are addressed moving forward and segmenting into which ones come before the board?
Absolutely. Because it's all, the horse is out of the barn.
Right.
We're sitting here on.
Right. This happened, I think, in November, if I recall correctly.
Yeah.
And here we are. It's June 25.
Right. And again, it's nice to see the money going towards the road, towards the tree work, but it's still $100,000.
Yep.
Any other discussion on transfers? In that case, I'll give Cece a break and move that the board authorize year-end transfers as outlined in a memo dated June 20, 2019 from Todd Lidmark.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next up, please consider declaring a state of water supply conservation. This is fairly routine, Blythe, am I correct?
It is routine, and I, because I was not in the office last week, I wasn't necessarily aware of the actual form that had already been sent in in March. This feels a little awkward, but I think it's still good for a lot of reasons to talk about and approve the measures that we, I think we're, timing will need to be adjusted in the future. But to remind people that we don't have endless amounts of water, and the water usage goes up, you know, exponentially in the summer from 300,000 to 400,000 gallons a day to as much as a million if it's hot and people are using it for gardening and pools and other sorts of things. And so for the board to vote the restrictions, and so in here are, there are five restrictions the board by its bylaws can impose. The DPW director is recommending three. Those were already communicated to the DEP, and they will go out with water bills. We haven't had a process to actually go out and stop people from filling a pool or watering a lawn. It hasn't gotten to that point, and we've had, you know, don't know that the spring of endless rain will continue into the summer. Those certainly help, but we'll certainly make you aware if we're reaching a point where there is concern and we at least have to start stopping and letting people know that, hey, there's a restriction and, you know, we need them to comply.
So this is in effect something that you do every year anticipatory of the fact that people utilize more water in the summer, and you're trying to be proactive in protecting the resource.
Correct.
And I only ask that out loud because I know that we had an epic NOAA-level rain in the spring, and I know myself included, if I see a water ban, I think, well, why is there a water ban? We're like drowning in water, it's too much water. And now it, but this.
Summertime, you know, generally the rains.
It's just being proactive to protect the resource.
Right.
Because in the summer, you are more inclined to drought, and people are more inclined to utilize water.
Right.
Right. That makes sense.
And you could easily have a situation if you hadn't had a lot of rain where if you had a fire in town, you could easily drop the water level in our two wells by a million gallons very quickly.
Right.
Or usage was really high in your wells, as you know, we only have two at the moment, and they can't keep up, we're having to call our rent them, who we have an interconnect with, and buy water from them. So, you know, we want to avoid those two situations.
Gotcha.
And how do we do it?
Makes sense.
We ask people to, you know, be thoughtful about how they approach their everyday life and be careful so that we don't run into those situations.
So it's just, it's not being reactionary to an audit. It's just being proactive to protect the resource.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Chris, any questions?
Nope.
Very good. In that case, I would move that the board declare a state of water supply conservation through September 2019 and impose the following restrictions: only handheld watering, no automatic sprinkler systems, and no filling of swimming pools.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Next, please consider authorizing the chair to award a bid for the SERSG office supplies and paper to various bidders for fiscal year 2020. Any background, Blythe?
Hopefully, this is the last of the surge bids. We'll be householding these into one item next year, but amongst all the other things that they bid out for the area towns, and it actually is a wonderful service, is office supplies, ink and toner cartridges, paper, and so in your packet is their recommendation of what goes to WB Mason and United Stationer Supply Catalog, just so that the town can take advantage of the best pricing possible without having to do the legwork of procuring it on our own. We don't have a procurement department. It would fall to each office to be doing that sort of thing, or one of us to try to take that on for the rest of the department, so it's a win-win.
Anybody have any other questions or comments?
Nope. It's pretty.
Well, in that case, I would move that the board authorize the chair to execute contracts bid out on the town's behalf for office supplies and paper for fiscal year 2020.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Next item, please consider approving private street names as proposed for the Village at Norfolk Development. Pretty cut and dry here.
I've actually looked at you for that one because I think this is pretty typical of a process for naming streets, but you have more time on the planning board than I do.
Correct. So the planning board essentially makes the recommendation, and the board of selectmen usually just approves it at that point. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the naming of the streets or the methodology behind such?
Didn't we have a memo that was from the, I think it was the historical commission asking us to name veterans and?
There is a standard in town that is highlighted that asks that we first go with veterans and people of significance to the transitory.
Correct. So Pilgrim Way and Patriot Way, don't remind me of any of those, too. So I'm wondering, we have nobody out there that's a veteran of significance, importance that we?
According to the note that was included in the packet, I guess this planning board did reach out to the agent and the commission, and I'm guessing they didn't come up with anything. I can't, I can only tell you what I heard, not what I know.
Richard McCarthy. We had reached out to Bill Conklin, the veterans officer, and at this time, we don't have any veterans who are deceased that are available for us, and that's kind of the pattern it's been of a deceased veteran or somebody related. We then, Betsy Pine, no, wait, no, I didn't get her name, historic commission. I did meet with her actually on some names, so there wasn't a name of historic significance for this particular property that she, we do have a list, and as the properties come up to look and see if it might be worthwhile, and neither was the case for this one here, so we went with those names there. So we did go through that process. We didn't come up with anything. Fortunately, the last one that was done was Cleary Circle, which wasn't.
Former select person.
Former select person and distinguished past, but we don't have one at this particular time.
Okay.
Further questions? Thank you, Rich. Further questions, comments? I'm hearing none. In that case, I will make a motion that the board name the two private ways within the development known as Village of Norfolk as Pilgrim Way and Patriot Way as called for on the plan provided by the planning board.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All right. The next one is to please consider contract amendments for the H Olive Day roof contract. I've got the last two off, so I might need a little more here.
I brought reinforcements. So as we have discussed at other meetings, there was an interest by the board in having the school and our facilities staff work with our contractor and our consultants to find any reductions in costs that would be appropriate for this project that would also fall within what the state would approve since they're in part funding the project. And so in your packet is a proposal, change order number one, to remove the flat seam copper that is in some locations on the roof and replace it with standing seam aluminum. And Matt Hafner is here. He can give you some more background about the differences. I think what I generally understand is that the standing seam aluminum is a perfectly good, serviceable material, appropriate for the use, may not last quite as long as the copper, but offers, you know, a savings that's not insignificant. And so the question is, does the, you know, after discussing it, does the board want to accept that change order and reduce the project cost or leave it as it is? So I would start there.
Very good. Was there anybody who wanted to speak?
I think Matt can answer questions that you have and see where the conversation takes us.
In that case, Cece, Chris, anything that you'd like to discuss?
Matt, I guess I'll ask the question, and I'll go back to way back when. I know you talked about copper, I know you talked about aluminum, but why can't shingles be put in this area? What is the maintenance of this area that's requiring a material other than shingles?
Can I just go up to the table or?
Yeah, you can come to the table. When we sat down with Gail, our design team, we discussed having a product that was going to last and be low maintenance. Maintenance is money. We wanted something that was going to survive the life of the building, so we looked at having good quality materials that required little to zero maintenance. You could put a shingle roof on the cupolas and the light monitors as you have. They have significant increase by having a shingle on there, to my explanation, is uplift. It was suggested because we don't want to go up there because it's not an easy area to access. You need to have a massive lift, which will take up many parking spaces, to go up there and gain access, because you're not able to set up, it's not an easy area, so to just gain access to work on it. So you want to try to limit any problems. So we speced out a 50-year shingle, a lifetime shingle, and it was suggested that we could go with aluminum. So we specked out a 50-year shingle, a lifetime shingle, and it was suggested that we could go with aluminum. And that's about a 30-year product, or we could go with copper, which is about a 75-year product. It was told to us, it was, aluminum was three quarters of the price of copper. It made sense to go with something that we would never have to touch again. That's the reason it was specked out. It was about maintenance, performance, longevity, looking to avoid any future problems, future costs. Everything goes up in value, nothing goes down in value, especially with maintenance. So it was, let's do it once and do it right and don't do it again. That was the theory behind that.
But what is the maintenance? If we're putting a 50, 50-year shingle on the building, if we put a 50-year shingle on the cupolas and the monitors, that's actually more than a 30-year Kainohar aluminum. And what maintenance, again, am I doing up there that requires me to get a lift to go up there? I shouldn't have to go up there with a lift to do any maintenance on my shingles for the next 50 years, according to the proposal from yourself and Gail.
Yes. So engineers who do this for a living suggested this would be the route to go from past experience. This is what they do for a living. You do not want to, my position is not to argue with them. I'm using their expertise, their guidance. The performance on the shingles be good. They have, they have area that Chris could explain. They kind of weigh themselves down. There's not a large area up there. It's better to fasten it securely. For the shingles, you do secure them, but there's a much better chance for uplift up top there. So we're looking to avoid any future. I'm not going to say I didn't design it, we tried to do this once, do it right, not take shortcuts, that a shingle wouldn't do the trick, and it might, and it might not. But I'd rather do it right and spend the money one time and being assured that we're going with the route that's going to last.
Well, there's a change-
I don't have a crystal ball.
Has the shingle manufacturer told us that he would not accept shingles at the monitors or at the cupola? Because the shingle manufacturer is going to warranty- Hear me out. I know a little bit about this, a little bit like an engineer, we actually do this. A shingle manufacturer is going to give you a warranty. If he's going to exclude the cupolas and exclude the monitors, then I would agree with you 100%. But I haven't heard that he's excluding either one of these items. So if he's not excluding these items, they would be covered under the 50-year warranty, which you have all proposed.
And again, Chris, we have engineers that have been selected by the state to make sure if the state's investing money, it's going to be invested wisely. They're not, we're not looking to, I can't speak on their behalf. It was done as a performance-based decision. I don't know any other way to tell you that that's how we base this.
So from your perspective, Chris, your point is that looking at the recommendation that's in place right now to utilize the copper despite the long-term cost savings based on warranty is not going to be as much as listed or as thought to when you're talking about replacing it with aluminum. You're saying that it's not the cut and dry, one-for-one that we're looking at right here and just saying we're going to cut $40,000 out and lose later on down the road. You're saying it's a different perspective, right?
Well, I think you have, I think you have to look at the whole thing. You're going to save $40,000 going to aluminum. The aluminum doesn't have a warranty period as long as your shingles.
Right.
Okay, so right off the bat, you're putting in a lesser product than you're putting on the rest of your roof. I've heard all along that the reason you're doing copper was longevity. So now you're going with a lesser product, which in my mind makes no sense. You're going with a lesser product than the shingles. So you're either now back to either copper or shingles. Has anyone told us that the shingles will not perform and not be covered under the 50-year warranty? It is not the engineers who warranty this roof. It is not the O P M who warranties this roof. It is the manufacturer of the shingles who warranties this roof. If he says a shingle will be adequate and he will warranty them, then I would certainly say we can save over $100,000 on this job by going with shingles. And has that been explored?
Okay, so your point is not so much between aluminum and copper, it's between regular shingle and what we're with right now.
Shingle and whatever you're going to do.
Okay.
My gut feel is this has nothing to do with performance. This has to do with aesthetics. And I've said all along, and I use the term gold plating. If this guy, I mean, all over Europe, they use slates. They slate cupolas, they slate church steeples with slate, much more fragile to high wind uplift. I don't understand why we're going to a lesser product now. And I don't know why we haven't explored shingles. And again, the only one who can verify that is Greenwood can verify that with the shingle manufacturer, that Willie provide a warranty. And in my understanding, in my years of experience, I've never seen a shingle manufacturer exclude a section of a roof for wind uplift. They warranty their shingles for a certain wind uplift. That's what they're warranted for. So have we explored that? And if we haven't, why not? Because now I see that, as I stated long ago, it's interesting, the difference between copper is not 50 cents to aluminum, it's actually $2.86 a square foot difference. Not 50 cents, as we were told at the last selectments meeting.
Well, it's interesting, I'll use that as a place to chime in. It's my recollection from conversations that I had prior to town meeting, as well as the information that I was given to read, that the reason for the copper wasn't because willy-nilly we don't care that it costs more money. I was told, you were told that they cost the same. And it was only later that you discovered that they were a different price. And now today, you're saying here that you knew that it costs more, but it didn't matter.
No, did not say that.
Okay, so I must have misunderstood you.
I said that we specked this out.
Yeah.
So it will last long. The price difference, we were told, was $1.50 and $2. Excuse me if I was giving incorrect information, I'm repeating from the professionals that I've been working with. It is, there is a price difference and there's a reason for the price difference. It's the quality of the job. So my, I could, architects don't warranty any building. It's the design that they have to warranty. They don't want to put a design that's not as good as another design. And if they know there's a way to do it better, that's what they want to do. And that's what we've done. I don't, I can't try to explain this away. We tried doing this one time, doing it right. It was a consideration that was taken. We have leaking up there, it's a very difficult area. It wasn't, let's just spend town money. That doesn't work that way. We want to do it one time, do it right. And that's the only thing I can continue to state. There was a, it was supposed to be $1.50 per square foot for aluminum and $2 per square foot per copper. I have it on my MSBA sheet that you guys were all awarded, what we were shown. They were saying it was three quarters of the price. It wasn't some arbitrary number that was pulled out. We're using the information that we were given. We, the company that's, our designer is one of the top companies in the state and they're an incredible company. We didn't ask them to do the cheapest product possible. We asked them to do it once and do it properly. And that's all I'm trying to defend here, is do it once and do it properly.
No, I understand what you're saying.
We're not adding gold plating, that's ridiculous. We're doing it for performance.
And I want to make it seem like you have to defend anything, Matt. I think that we're just trying to learn a little bit more about what got us to the point where you are right now. So don't feel like you have to defend anything.
Let me just ask a question. Matt, do you know, to the point of the 50-year shingle, do you think it's possible for us to get an answer on that so the board could take this up again on July 9th and not delay the project?
That was going to be my next question, because the only thing before the board now is aluminum-
Correct.
-or copper. There's nothing-
We're meeting two weeks from today.
There are a couple of other topics that we-
No, 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 but in this one, in-
This particular issue.
In this particular issue, right, like there's change order one. And change order one is aluminum v. copper. It's not aluminum v. copper v. a player to be named later.
I guaranteeing the contractor would love to switch it to shingles. It's less labor, it's easier for their schedule. It doesn't mean it's a better product, you know.
But can we move it to the 9th to find out if it's-
I can find this out, but they have till August 6th for substantial completion. So the 9th is further making the-
That's my, that's my question.
I don't think we can wait that long. If you want, we can reconvene in a couple of days and go that route.
Well, how quickly do you think you can get an answer?
I can try to get an answer by the end of the week, we can meet beginning of next week.
So as part of this, we would be able to see an outline that not only includes the difference in material costs, but also from what you're saying, any potential savings in labor costs?
There would be a potential, there's a potential in labor costs. There's a huge difference in labor costs. And then there's a reason why it was selected to go that route. It wasn't, it was trying to mitigate any future issues by doing.
Right, and I remember you talking about that before, because you can't do a ladder, you have to do a lift, and the lifts cost money. Like I do, I do listen, I just remember hearing it slightly narrow as you did.
Don't anybody be fooled, though.
A more narrow-
We're not talking about a lesser product. You're putting 890 squares of a 50-year shingle on this building.
I'm just putting it next week, just in case.
If this is not a good product, why are we putting 890 squares on a roof? I mean, when we talk about this, we talk about putting copper or aluminum on these areas because it's a better product. These areas do not account, these areas account for 6,000 square feet. That's 60 squares. You have 890 squares of shingles. So to say that 890 square shingles is a less performing product and a less quality product for your roof-
Well, isn't he just saying that for that location?
It sort of scares me that 60 squares has become more valuable than the 890 squares.
I don't think-
So I don't want anybody to believe that we're putting a lesser product on this roof. And I think I keep hearing that, the best performing product. It is not, it is, it is a different product.
I just-
If the copper, please let me speak. If the copper lasts for 70 years and the shingles lasts for 50 years, that's not going to help us.
I understand that. I'm not suggesting it's less quality at all.
I keep on hearing it's a less performing product.
I'm not-
The shingles are not.
I agree with you. All I'm asking is, do, because we are in a tight timeframe, do we have the time? If we can get an answer quickly to your point and find out that we can do the 50-year quality shingle for a even lesser price and not hold up the job, wouldn't that be a good outcome? That's what I'm trying to achieve.
At this point, it would. It's the same question I asked at town meeting two months ago.
Okay, well, we're here.
Can I just-
We're here today.
Statement.
Because we were asked to look at copper versus aluminum. I'm sorry, we didn't think to look, or whoever didn't seem to look at 50-year shingle as well. We could have put three items on the table, but we didn't. So let's see if we can sort that out.
Next.
There's absolutely nothing wrong with asphalt shingles. It's about specific application and where it's being installed. There's nothing at all wrong with these shingles. These are great shingles. But you don't put steel on, I don't even know equate it. It's because of its application is why it was designed that way.
So let me just throw out there theoretically, we table, like theoretically, you know, we tabled the change order one, not the rest that everybody's here on. Change order one hypothetically gets tabled, how many times can I say that? Hypotheticaltically, tabled to next Tuesday, right? It's not all the way out to the 9th. And it gives time to research. Chris's point is this shingle warranted for the areas that are currently slated for copper. And also, right, it would also be a fair question for someone to maybe come and opine why they didn't consider a shingle in the first place, right? Is, to your point, right, that, because I'm hearing that shingle may not be as flashy, literally, as copper. But if it is warranted, it is perhaps likely to be, to last as long. And so where's the structural downside? I'd want to hear somebody come and explain to me what the structural downside to having shingle versus a metal. Because I've heard you guys say we need metal because of lifts, and I'm like, oh, okay. But I hear Chris say, why not shingle? And now I want to know, why not shingle? Why, right? If you can.
I can see what I can do for getting an engineer down here.
And I assume that the state would be fine with shingle?
I'd have to find out.
I think that's important to understand.
Yeah, that's a great question, too. That's a great question.
I hope so. If it's a good, if it's a great product and it's less expensive and everybody will be behind it, why not?
Well, that was decided, I mean, the design team felt.
I know, but design teams can, you know.
I think at the end of the day, it comes down to your warranty.
Okay.
You're building a school. You want a leak-proof school.
Yes.
That's what we want.
That's right.
I think that is the ultimate goal of the H Olive Day School, to get a roof that does not leak. So that comes down to a warranty. Engineers, design boards, copper manufacturers, aluminum suppliers, they don't warranty it. The only one who's going to be warranting this roof is a roofing manufacturer. So that's the most important thing, is what the roofing manufacturer is willing to warranty. If he's willing to warranty this roof for 50 years, then if anybody can explain to me any other reason not to use shingles, I'll be more than welcome to listen to it.
Well, I think that's what we'd like to hear.
That's what we're trying to achieve.
That's really what it comes down to, is warranty.
I will say this. The note for this meeting, the agenda item, was to evaluate a change order between the use of copper or aluminum in but a portion of this project. And now what we've come to is to reevaluate the larger-scale material being used on the project as a whole.
In theory.
Okay, got you.
I want to make sure that we don't start to hinder the work that's been done to put all this together over all this time just because we want to learn more about the project. It's very important. We need to learn about it. We're spending town money here, so we need to make sure we're being diligent in that. But I also don't want to put us in a position where we're going to end up spending more money on accelerated labor to get this project done at the end because we were opining over the materials that are being used.
It's a great word, isn't it? Like one of the best.
So I'm more than open to, Matt, if you're able to collect this information for us, present us with a full outline of total cost difference between each material, not only in just the material itself, but also the labor required to install it and also the long-term implications of whatever warranty is associated. I think that would be able to give us what we need to be able to give some clear direction and get this thing moving. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. I am not here next week. So this would be a Thursday thing, it sounds like.
Thursday, is it July 4th?
No, 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 this week.
Can you turn, can you do that with open meeting law?
No, we can't post for Thursday because it's already Tuesday.
If you posted for 40 hours from now, we'd have to do it 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
We can't do Friday because town hall is closed.
We could have it at a different room. We could have it at the, I happen to be at the COA in the morning for a couple of things and we could ask to meet there quickly.
I would have to, you know, the engineering team's doing other projects as well at this point. So I, in order for me to have them stop and reevaluate, redesign, come up with an alternate, because it's not just let's change it, there's designing behind it, how they're going to secure everything. It changes a lot of stuff. So there's a fee associated with that, and that's not going to happen right away.
Well, that was back to my question of thinking about July 9th. Can we get that work done and be able to not hold up the project at the answers and make a decision then? Can you check on that?
I can check on that.
Okay.
I can't give you an honest answer at this point because they are scurrying right now, they're procuring everything. I don't even know if they've already procured the materials, which if they've done, we own those materials already, too. So when you-
Would they have procured a material when they knew there was still a debate as to whether or not it was copper v. aluminum?
By the contract, they can, and they can stick it with us. If we put it out to bid, I don't think they have.
Being told to me at town meeting either.
But I mean, that's part of the procurement process. They've been, they have a contract to build a roof, redo a roof this way with these materials. So I think Matt is correct that they need to follow that and be able to meet the substantial completion date. So the question now is, can we stop and do enough work without holding up that final date? Because it's really critical to get school open on time.
And I also have to coordinate with their schedule, too, because they've already posted a schedule to the state of how they're going to construct everything. So it's not a very simple, quick, but I need it to be very simple and quick. So I will do my best to inform Blithe of what I can find out and go from there.
Is it possible, well, I know you're away, I was going to say, can you Skype in somebody?
We don't allow remote, boards never vote on remote participation in meetings, so no.
We could just have your pet on an iPad.
Point me towards the crowd. I don't know. I feel, I feel badly that we've had this question in front of us for over a week now. And just now, we're going to change the scope of what we're asking for someone to be provided. So I apologize for that. That's not the way that this should work.
Well, you could just decide to go with one of these, too.
Right.
But the problem there is Susie Yankee over here thinks aluminum is just fine. You may think differently and he's going to want the vetting of, rightfully would want the vetting, right?
I don't, I don't. I'm not going to beat a dead horse. When you do a project, you got to plan upfront. You got to plan upfront. The reason we're here tonight with this issue is because this was not thought through, plain and simple.
Assuming that's right.
That's it. So do what you want to do.
What do we do about the change order? So if-
Do what you want to do, but this was not planned out properly. So you may be sorry that we're here tonight, but we're here tonight because of improper, not proper planning.
Right.
Plain and simple.
But as you said-
So if you want to review it, review it as it is.
There was, that was, that sort of, that was a horse that left the barn, quote your earlier.
Well, they brought it back up. When they brought us aluminum, they brought it back up.
No, no, I understand that. But we're sort of presented with Hobson's choice of vote on the change order now, tonight, copper v. aluminum. copper v. aluminum, or try to punt and potentially muck up the whole.
I don't know how you muck it up, because your shingle, you've got 60 days to install copper, you've got 30 days to install aluminum. It's going to take them three days to install shingles. So if anything, you're going to reduce the length of this contract.
Factoring in the redesign, the approval.
It's not a redesign, it's just instead of.
Whatever you need to do to.
Alls you have to do is just shingles instead of aluminum or copper. It is not a redesign. I, I know, I know you, I know you know this, but I know this a little better. I do it for a living. Okay? This is not a redesign. Greenwood Industries tomorrow at noon time can give you the answer to this question. They can then review it with the design review board, and you can actually have an answer by 6 o'clock tomorrow night. Greenwood Industry knows their business. I'm sure they can do this and provide you with answers by 6:00 PM tomorrow night.
Well, but we can't have a meeting until.
I understand that. So if you don't want to wait for that, then you make a choice between your copper and your aluminum. And go forward.
This was well-designed. This is.
I don't want to get into the back and forth about that.
Agreed.
It is, it is a reengineering of it.
Right.
Positively reengineering of it.
I hear you. I hear you. So arguably, you have two motions in front of you, the moderator and me.
Well, no, we have.
You could either, you could move to table, and if that fails, then you move on the change order, right? Or you could just.
I don't know if we have to do it in such sequential order like that for this, right?
The moderator and me.
Very structured.
I like structure. So you're the chair.
Well, yes, thanks. Appreciate that. All the perks. Well, I think that since it is part of our agenda, I would move, since the proposal is that we replace the copper with aluminum. Oh, no, because then it has to go one way or the other. Can't do that.
That's right.
Yep.
That's right.
Just kidding.
Moderator.
Yep. That's smart. Well, I, I think that we need to do the discovery at this point. I'm not, I'm not thrilled that it's coming up right now. I wish that this would have come up a week and a half ago when the question was initially posed to us. But now that it is in front of us, I think that we owe it to explore and try to figure out if that's a viable option for us or not. So Matt, we would appreciate if you were to do that. And then, do I have to make a motion, too? No, because there was nothing that was ever open in that case.
Right.
Okay. And if we need to scramble to be able to come back together to make a decision, then that's what we'll do. Agreeable?
Yeah.
Agreeable.
Agreeable?
Yep.
Very good.
Chris, are you available next week if we get an answer and we can post a meeting quickly to do it, I don't know, Wednesday?
When are you, you're.
The whole week.
The whole, you're gone the whole week. Okay, yeah.
I'm just saying, if there's two of you, that's what we minimally need.
I'm here.
To be able to have a vote. I'm here. If we got an answer, you know, on Monday morning, for example, we could post something on sometime on Wednesday and be able to vote on it and not hold it up too much longer.
If you got any, I mean, I understand that you've got a bunch of competing things, but say hypothetically, you reached out to Greenwood tomorrow and they were able to turn around some of the answer quickly enough for you to say, you know what, we could probably have a meeting this Friday or what, no?
But it's not a Greenwood decision. It's the.
They're part of, I understand it's not a Greenwood decision.
It's the architect has to redesign, redo the loads, make sure everything is going to work. It's not just take this for that. It's not a home. It's, it's an engineered product, it's an engineered building.
But one of the questions is whether or not they'll warranty, right? If they ask, if you ask that question and the answer is no, problem solved, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So they are part of the problem. They're one of the pieces of information you're going to want to have. And I would go there first, because theoretically, if they say no, we would never warranty that. Cupulas, are you crazy? Then the conversation dies, and we're back to change order.
Mm-hmm.
I understand what you're saying, that if they say, oh, heck, yeah, warranties, sure, all the time, then you've got to go to B, C, and D.
Sure.
But I certainly think they're a part of the conversation. There's a guy waving his hand, but I don't know what we do with arms raised, somebody out here.
You can take a question if you want.
With a microphone, sir, go right ahead.
David does.
They're up here.
Hey, Amy?
Yes.
Ernie Alex, North Street, 40 North. Spent my life in heavy construction, both running it, inspecting it, including this building. On the roof, you'll find a cupola, very large cupola. Ice and water underneath shingles, still good. Turn your back around, look at the library, shingles on the cupolas, stood up very good. Roof, you got problems over it?
No, there's copper over the cupolas.
I just looked at them on the way in. Okay.
It's copper.
All of Day School, the addition. I was the inspector on it, also a member of the permanent building committee here for quite a few years. We put the roof on 25-year shingle. Insistence was made by selectmen here that there would be the red stripes going through. The only red stripe shingles that could be bought were a 10-year shingle. So you're basically talking about the same thing. So you people shouldn't feel bad that a mistake was made, because there's been a long line of them, all through all of this construction that has gone on in this town. We had a permanent building committee that was all people that have worked in construction all their lives. When we came up with something, especially putting the architects and engineers back in their place, because most of them really don't know what they're doing. None of them have ever pounded a nail without hitting their finger. But anyway, they have to be looked at all the time. Do we have ice and water underneath the, did I talk to Matt?
You can direct a question to the chair, and then I'll direct it to Matt, yep.
Do we have ice and water spec for under the shingles?
We do.
All the way on the cupolas or just around the edges on the regular building?
Right now, on the new, on the new construction?
Yeah.
It's, it's ice and water, then there's insulated decking, then another layer of ice and water, and then the shingles.
Okay.
The cupolas were designed differently, where they wouldn't, they're using a felt for movement and the ice and water. But there is ice and water, yes.
Because the shingle companies are more cooperative if you have the ice and water, and plus, they're going to stand up. But you people are doing exactly what you should be doing as your new selectmen, listening to people that know what they're talking about, engineers, architects. In the last 10 years, this building here, you can hear all the exhaust. Why can you hear, can I just move a little bit?
Yeah.
Why can you hear the exhaust? A day before this building went out to be specked, looking at the prints, we have a sloped roof. The architects, engineers, engineered all the heating system that we had a flat roof. So the big six-foot by six-foot squared ductwork, three feet of it was outside of the roof in the entire upper area. We got lamb beams through here. Oh, that looks real grid, good, the way they did everything. The only problem is, you couldn't get a duct from point A to point B without going underneath. That's why you have places in here that have six-foot-two ceilings. Why do you have a noisy system? Because they engineered it wrong. They're trying to squeeze all the duct, the heating or cooling, whichever has been on at the time, through a duct which is too small. It's like a jet engine. They created a Venturi.
All right, Mr. Alex, bring it back into the original point.
Yeah. Well, the original point is, for years, I've done high pitches. Roger Williams Zoo, we did the spires down there, 25-foot-high. They were at a 75-degree angle. We shingled them. Shingles are very good, properly put in, and they have a proper base. And when you're getting into this 50-year warranty, I ain't going to be around, but you're going to have problems around then.
Thank you, sir. David?
I have two logistic comments on things I've heard. One was the issue of Skyping somebody into a selectman's meeting, and it is, in fact, the Board of Selectmen that would determine whether or not the town of Norfolk wants to permit remote participation. So that is a decision the Board could make. Another problem that was mentioned was a meeting on Friday because the town hall is closed. Again, the Board of Selectmen could decide that they were going to use this room on a Friday. And the things related to the roof is that, at the town meeting, I was pressing as hard as I could to understand what a warranty meant. And what I ended up understanding, and the experts can correct me if I'm mistaken, was that labor was guaranteed for two years and that the shingle itself was prorated, so that if, after, say, 30 years, it failed, instead of getting replacement, one would get back 40% of the cost of the shingle, because it had failed 60% into its life, and no reimbursement for any labor necessary. So in thinking about warranties, what warranties mean, I was certainly wrong and mistaken impression that a warranty meant replace it if there's a problem. It apparently doesn't mean that.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So it sounds like we have some direction on this item, at least the change order. Matt, you're going to do some due diligence for us and get back to us when we can convene again to come up with a direction, a definitive direction on this, so we can get started.
Sir.
Thank you, Matt. We appreciate it. Item number two.
So the second item is a letter in your packet from the principal of the school to all three of you, thanking you for taking on this project, but also pointing out a number of reasons why the decorative shingle that's on the front of the building is important and why it should be maintained. And as you recall, that, you may recall, that was a alternate bid when the bids were opened earlier this year, and that cost was $20,000. And the town elected, the board elected to award the contract without that included. So it's, it's not planned. And I think, I don't know, but I'm guessing that some of the folks who are in the audience here tonight will want to hear the Board's debate about whether or not that is a good thing to do, what the cost is, how it would be handled. There is, it's alluded to fundraising here, but I don't know exactly what that means for this letter. I haven't had any direct discussion with the folks who are listed here.
Very good. Did anybody want to say something before we deliberate?
Hi.
Hello. Please do.
These are nice chairs. Anita Mecklenburg, 35 Lake Shore Drive in Norfolk. I am a resident of 25-plus years. I am also a parent. My children have the privilege of going through the Norfolk Public Schools, and I am currently Assistant Principal of the HL of Day School. So, thank you. And I do want to thank you for voting and supporting our roof. We desperately need a new roof, so thank you for that. I put it down, so I didn't ramble. So I'm going to read what I wrote. So 25 years ago, or 26, really, we lived in an apartment in Quincy, and I was a teacher in Franklin. And so the commute was long, and I got tired of driving on the highway, so on my way home, I began wiggling through the back roads. On my regular trips, I would go through Norfolk, and I loved the interesting police station. I love the library, the cute little li, I was littler at the time, the cute little library, and I loved the school. Like, I was like, my husband, you have to see this school, it's the most beautiful school. I even liked the four-way stop, because it seemed like the only four-way stop in New England where people actually politely waited their turn. And so when it came time to buy a home, I told my husband I want to live in Norfolk, like, this is where we want to live. And because it's a place where people care. Like, it seemed like the police station was built with care. The school was built with care and with love, and it, it just was a town, that's where I wanted to live. And we found a home here, and we've lived here happily ever since that time. The attractive architecture that has been here and the public buildings, especially the HL of Day, played a feeling in my preliminary feelings about the town. And then I want to fast-forward to a random story from two years ago, sorry to be a little bit random, but my brother-in-law was in hospice in Rhode Island. And it was tough. Like, that's really super, super tough. And my husband was down there full-time, but I would drive after work down to be there and then come home late at night. And there was this bridge that, in Rhode Island, that I would come over, and it was lit with like these coolest lights, and they were different colors every night. And when I came up to the bridge, I always, like, I started to think, what color is it going to be, or whatever? And as I drove over that bridge, I just always, like, even in the saddest of, your heart is so sad, I would always smile, and it made me smile, kind of in spite of myself. And I know that that bridge, when it was built, there were people who said, like, why are we spending money on these fancy lights? Like, fancy lights don't matter, we just need a way to get from one side to the other. And for me, those fancy lights were like a really beacon in dark times. And so I think architecture matters, art matters. I fell in love with HL of Day from far away, and then I grew to love it and know it when my children were educated there. And now I also love it and know it in my role as Assistant Principal. Last year, we surveyed our parents for, we were getting ready to do our school improvement plan, which is one of our charges, and we surveyed parents about all different aspects of our school and what, what we could do better. Like, we're always striving to do better. And we had a 97% approval rating from our parents. Like, I don't think we could have a 97% approval rating that this is a pen. And we have 97%, question after question, parents just love the HL of Day School. And I'm going to go on. We also, inside of our school, we want to be excellent, we want to be the best school in the state, but we also are really, really careful. Linda, we'll get her, she'll say, I'll bring the Bronco to school, and she'll drive a Bronco and drive to Wellesley to pick up materials, so we aren't paying exorbitant costs. Or Susan, who's sitting over there, will argue with them, saying, I know this is a sale, buy one, get one for individuals, but we want that sale, too, for our school. And we work really hard not to, not to go crazy and to be sensible, or to say, maybe the prison can build this for us, so we can save a few pennies. Or maybe we really do, we're, we're not irresponsible people. Our teachers work so hard without pay, there's probably people who are just now kept out by your fence. So they'd still be there trying to do things in their classroom and getting ready for school. Anyway, to pull all these stories together, I just, I just want to let you know that, like, the arts matter, the roof matters, and we recognize that it's a ridiculous cost to put it all the way around and on the inside, and we understand that. But I think to put it just on the part facing the street, the way that the original designers intended it to be showcases, it, it keeps the intent of the original designers, and it allows the physical building to show the excellence that is the HL of Day School. And so thank you for considering that. I recognize that it's an expense and feel that it's important. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Sir.
Well done. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Betty Verri, 71 Seacong Street. I am a lifelong member of Norfolk. My family has been here, so I can't get comfortable here, for over 100 years.
Did you sink into that?
Ms. Day was actually my sixth-grade teacher. I used to work at the Day School as a second-grade teacher until I retired. I have grandchildren that are going to the HL of Day School. My family has been here, so I can't get comfortable here, for over a hundred years.
You do sink into them.
Ms. Day was actually my sixth-grade teacher. I used to work at the Day School as a second-grade teacher until I retired. I have grandchildren that are going to the H.L. Day School. Samuel was born this morning, and hopefully he will be along.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I also would like to speak to the atmosphere of the H.L. Day School. As a member of the staff there, it was my opportunity, I had the opportunity to go to many other schools in the area as part of the Southeast School Alliance, and we would go and visit and see other schools and what they look like, what they, what kind of programs they were offering. And as I had told Mrs. Balfour before, I was always so very happy to come back and say that I worked at the H.L. Day School. The sense of community there is incredible, and Linda and Anita and the staff are to be absolutely commended for the type of atmosphere that they provide to the children. You have a gem from someone who has been working other places and seeing what happens in the school. I taught second grade. The second-grade pictures that they took at the end of the year, when the children, before the children went over to the new school, somebody, the photographer gets up on the ladder, and all of the kids are lined up out by the sign, and that beautiful, those beautiful shingles, even though they cost a little bit more, were there, and they have added a measurably to the sense of community and the sense of that this place is not the usual place. It's something very, very special. I know that there's a cost involved, but I brought my checkbook tonight, and I will donate a hundred dollars towards the cost, and if two hundred people donate a hundred dollars, then we can get the shingles. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any thoughts they'd like to share?
I'll say something. I said a lot of it in the letter. Just to reiterate, see what Betty meant. These are heavy chairs. Just to reiterate some of the points that I made in the letter, I think that the roof design definitely is part of what makes our school, the physical part, unique. I think the overall design, I can remember when it was first designed, we wanted to make something that was very cozy and welcoming for our young children because we knew it was going to be the three-through-eight-year-olds that would attend the school. And the brick design with, you know, it looks like there are shutters on the windows, that's part of it, the cupola with the weather vane on it, and certainly the roof design certainly adds to that. As I mentioned, people are always commenting on the fact that the school looks like a cozy little cottage of learning. That's exactly what one person had, had mentioned to me. I think that, you know, just preserving the design is, it's an historical feature, it's a landmark at the school. When I've told people, like, even in my neighborhood, a new neighbor was asking, "Oh, what do you do? Where do you work?" And that's in Walpole. And I said, "Oh, I work at the H.L. Day School." And she goes, "Is that that school on Main Street?" And so, and she even mentioned the fact that it, you know, the way it's set back, the way it blends in. She actually mentioned the roof as well. So, it's always surprised me that as many people mention that roof design as they do. Not everyone does that mentions the school. A lot of them mention, you know, the shutters or just the cozy atmosphere. But I feel, as I said, that preserving it is preserving an important piece of Norfolk and its history. It is named after a very special person, Ms. H.L. Day. We said from the day that we opened the building, she would have been so proud to have that school named after her. She was a lifelong resident, like Betty, she was a lifelong resident of the town. She contributed a great deal. I think that the unique design of the building is part of her legacy as well and for everything that she did for the children of Norfolk. Again, I think I said, I bought extra lottery tickets. I was really hoping to win at least a chunk of lottery money so that I could have paid for it myself. I understand that it's an expense. I understand all the fiscal constraints. As Anita said, we try to be good stewards for the town. We have traveled to Worcester and Natick and all kinds of places to save four hundred dollars in shipping of, of books and materials in the past, and so we really try to do well by the town. We try to do the best job that we can, and we're also fiscally conservative. And Ms. Day would be very happy. She was my principal when I first started teaching, and she, she was just a great conservationist, saved everything, recycled everything, so we're really into that mode. So, for those reasons and more, I just ask that you really consider the pattern. It means a lot to us, all of us at the school. I know that many people expressed that to me. In fact, I have four or five other letters that people sent because they could not attend tonight. Our school council is in favor of retaining the design, and I know that if we put it out to the general public, I think that, you know, that our parents would, would support it as well. So, we ask for your consideration, realizing that it is an expense, but we think, as I said, it'd be like redoing the roof of the State House and saying, "Oh, we can't quite afford that gold." So, this is a bargain comparison. We're not asking for gold, we're just asking for a shingle design. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you want the other letters, or?
They should probably go for public records, correct?
Yes, please.
Thank you, everybody that spoke. I mean, your passion and your dedication comes out in the words that you shared, and it's very apparent, not only here and relates to the roof, but to everything that you do for the school, so thank you all very much. That being said, there is a fiscal impact here that we're discussing. Matt, that fiscal impact is?
Twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand dollars, correct?
Yes, sir.
C.C., Chris, thoughts?
And I think you, Matt, you said Gail said this could be done, right? In your memo to us, I think today, or?
Gail put out a letter. I asked them to address this, since there's been a lot of scuttlebutt about this, I asked them to address whether it could be done. It can be done, yes.
Okay.
Query, I see in the notes that it says, "It is our recommendation and that of both the roofer and our consultants that the decorative shingle is not as durable as what is proposed and may cause issues sooner than the balance of the roof." So, it's twenty thousand plus it may or may not. Have a microphone. It may or may not last as long as the rest of the roof. Is that right? Is that, where is this from? Like, I?
I've gleaned that from other documents and talking.
Is that your understanding?
Yes.
So, so it's not, the cost isn't just the twenty thousand, potentially. It's also?
It goes back to application again. Best practice doing application, what do you put? And it does, it adds value to the school because it keeps the design and I understand the points, and it also could potentially create further issues going down because it's, it's not using the shingles in their intended purpose. There is still ice and water underneath it, so you will rely more on ice and water than the shingles, but, but it's an inferior product, but it's, it's valuable on a different route, so it's hard to really pinpoint this one.
I mean, I just, I just heard Mr. Alex talk about the red stripe as folly that we paid for. I'm just curious, is this akin to the, right? I mean, I'm just reading, not, putting the twenty thousand aside for a second, I note that there's been a lot of discussion over the town meeting, before town meeting, leading up to town meeting. Everything was about the durability and the warranty and how long this is gonna last. And this, we got the short shrift before, and now, like, right in front of me is, hey, this isn't as durable, and so I just want more information.
That is correct. It is not as durable. It's not the proper application for these shingles.
Okay.
They're modifying the shingles to create a look that, to replicate a look as close as possible, but it's not, it's not best practice.
Okay, so assuming it's not best practice, but just to flip the coin for a second, is that, and I'll turn to you, you're, you're my shingle guy for this particular port, does that matter? I mean, just because?
Am I? I don't know. I'm, I think, I think it gets, I think it gets down to, the shingle, I think Matt's right, it's the same shingle as what's going on the rest of the roof. The problem is, the, this shingle's a laminated shingle. All the shingles up there will have a laminate, multiple layers that are glued together. When you start making the pattern, you have to start cutting off pieces of the laminate in order to make the shingles lay and put the pattern out that they're gonna, they're gonna make appropriate. So, that's the durability issue. But again, it gets down to, will the shingle manufacturer warranty the shingle? If the shingle manufacturer will warranty the shingle being cut on diagonals?
Then it's okay.
And done, then I would say, "You're fine."
Yeah.
Because again, the only one who, at the end of the day, is gonna be responsible for this roof is the shingle manufacturer and the contractor for four years. After that, nobody else is gonna take responsibility. So, I think if the, if the shingle manufacturer is willing to allow us to make the cuts, they're allowing this design that's been proposed, and it would be covered under the warranty, then that's really what's most important.
Do we know that answer? The shingle company would warranty?
We can find that out. They're not being installed as specified in their instruction manual.
Right.
So, usually, when you alter anything, it does affect a warranty.
Sure, but maybe?
We can find that out. Gail's, Gail's concern more than anything else is that the shingles are not gonna be the full length and the full weight, so they can actually, when it's windy out, they can lift up.
Blow away.
That is, that is the larger concern, and there's also, instead of having a thousand butts, there's ten thousand butts, so there's more potential areas. But, again, we have, it's not a black and white on this one, it's?
Right. No, I understand that, but it just, it was black and white on the page, it sort of left off at me that?
Sure.
We weren't talking apples and apples in terms of?
This one isn't an apples and apples.
My next question, because I'm full of them, I, I'm also reading that the, that this was rejected when the bids were open. And that was rejected by the Board of Selectmen?
We bid that as an alternate because it wasn't going to be covered by the MSBA. It was, this is a luxury item, we'll call it.
Yep.
This wasn't going to be covered, so this was, this, the bid came in higher than anticipated, and where contingency went significantly down, so this wasn't approved because of the cost of the project, the base bid.
And so, what's changed between when, was that a full board that rejected it, or just you, you folks in your process rejected it?
At town meeting, we were charged with, we have to look at ways to cost, to save cost. I do actually have something that we're working on currently, and being that this was an alternate, this wasn't part of the base bid, and we were charged with it, we didn't push for this.
Okay, so I just, I just, because the way it read was that, that the folks had come to the Board of Selectmen, made the pitch, was rejected, and were coming back, at which point, and I was sort of like, well, right? It says, "This was rejected when the bids were open," and so I just wanted to make sure it wasn't us who, the previous board that had rejected, because?
It wasn't, it was rejected because we were charged with saving costs and cutting costs.
I got it. No, I just was curious who rejected it, because it would be a different kettle of fish, right? If it came to the board and we're like, "We're back." Like, "What are you doing back?"
Because it wasn't a necessity.
Okay.
The board brought forth to town meeting the three million forty-three thousand without this alternate in order to be cost-conscious about where we stood on the bid for the project, the contingency needed to bring it, you know, to deal with unforeseen situations and trying to be, you know, cost-conscious.
So, nothing has changed, other than now we've, the town has voted to get the, the roof rolling, and now it's?
So, we only have a certain amount that was approved, and so, we don't have twenty thousand. We, well, we have a contingency, but we've had to dip into the contingency because we're working Saturdays. That requires some overtime on Matt's staff. It requires some additional work by the OPM to be there watching the project. There are some, what's, a little bit of rot in some soffits.
Some soffit rotting, which was not anticipated in this project. We had anticipated some decking being issued, and to date, they've stripped, rough estimate, a fifth of the roof, and the decking is in fine shape, but they have found significant rotting, not significant. Ninety percent of the rotting is in the addition, which was done on a more conservative design, and because of that, our, we've had a lot of the, soffits have been rotted out, so we had to surgically remove them and replace, and we're looking at options and how we want to fund that and do that, because we have some option, something, it's not included in the base bid, so I've been looking at trying to do cost savings, which I can go into if you'd like, but that's something we have to address.
So, in addition?
Our, so our concern is, with that, knowing all of that, and the contingency was, what, a hundred and fifty thousand?
Hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Is it, you know, is it a good choice to say, "We'll take twenty thousand of that contingency and dedicate it to this?"
When, if, when we're at the beginning of the project?
We don't, haven't maybe discovered all the issues yet, we're not at the point where we can say, "We know we'll have twenty thousand left, and we're also mindful of, we're trying to bring this project in as cost-effectively as we can for the town, should we spend twenty thousand, even if we do have it?" I think that's where we're bringing it to the board, saying, "These are the issues we're wrangling with, and we need your guidance and, or your guidance to the folks who love to see it, you know, can, could that fundraising be?
So, that was my next question.
Substantial enough to cover it? You know, and if it was, and the manufacturer says, "Yep, I'm gonna warranty it," is that the choice you want to make?
So, my next question, I told you I had a lot of them, and I'll, I'll cede the?
You're asking all my questions, so it's great. Go, come on.
So, my next question is, I also see in the body of the, the breakdown that I've been given, that there is an interest in fundraising in order to make up the difference, right? And I appreciate the fact that, at least for me, I am conservative, you know, you've been listening to me go wah-wah-wah about the cost for some significant amount of time now, and I was happy to stand on the side of rooting for the roof, notwithstanding the fact that candidly, I wasn't thrilled. So, I don't want to show all of my cards, because I, I also read in this that there's some people who are willing to have some skin in the game to try to fundraise in order to defer those costs. I'm curious if there was any fundraising that was done prior to writing this communique, right? Back when you first raised the idea of the twenty thousand and it was reject, your, your roof, and it was rejected? And, and what efforts, how successful do you all think that you would be in raising that money? What efforts would you engage in to raise them? And I know it's easy to say, "Oh, we just need two hundred people, add a hundred dollars, whatever, I'm, my math is rusty," but that's hard. I mean, I do fundraising for, for various institutions, and it's, it isn't, it is not easy. So, I'm just curious what, and then I have, my second, my secondary question would be like, assuming you guys have a plan that says, "Hey, we'll at least probably get ten of it," right? Or, "We have a plan for a significant amount." How does that, how do we deal with that, like, logistically? Because I don't want to tell the rest of the town, who's already sort of feeling the sting from the original, "Hey, we just flossied it up a bit to the tune of twenty grand," which is, it's, it's a lot of money for most people, it's a lot of money. And so, what happens if the fundraising isn't successful? Right? So, those are, so I have a logistic, so my question to the, to the, to the group is, what fundraising have you contemplated in order to meet this?
Well, we have just really come up with different ideas. GoFundMe page was one thing that was brought up.
Yeah, that's a great one.
Which is, seems to be successful for a lot of causes. We've talked about having like a community, like a spaghetti dinner, and doing something like a silent auction again. I know NCL just had theirs, but they raised quite a bit of money. So, we don't have anything specific, like, that we planned or anything.
I just wasn't sure. I wasn't saying you had to necessarily, I was just curious, because every, the letters that I've seen have all sort of rallied around this, "We'll fundraise." And, and I'm often curious if the "we'll fundraise" is the first indication that you're gonna fundraise, or has there been some behind-the-scenes fundraising activity before you told me you're gonna fundraise?
No, we didn't, because actually, we didn't, we, this didn't come to the forefront?
Right.
Until about two, two or three weeks ago, that this was definitely, it was not going to be funded, the, the design on the roof.
Oh, you just learned two or three weeks ago that you weren't gonna get your?
It definitely was, oh, yes, yeah. So, yeah.
Matt?
Yes, sir.
In the event that theoretically we are able to procure these funds outside of the town spending the money through fundraising or whatever other means there are, when do we need to know that we have those funds in order to be able to process this execution of the design?
They need to know within two weeks.
Within two weeks of right now?
Yes. I do have a, it might be out of place, but I've been sitting here digesting about the, looking at going over to asphalt shingles and replacing the metal on the roof.
I see where you're going with this.
Could the board entrust the town administrator and myself and the superintendent of schools to have it evaluated? I do know that will be a significant cost savings. I also do not feel it's the same quality job, but if it's enough of a cost savings, can I, we just do that and award, change it without having to have a revote? Can you guys authorize us to use best practices? And if it's not a good practice, then come back if they feel significantly against it, but if we could?
I like that. You could do that.
That's very elegant.
You could delegate that if you chose to.
I love elegant solutions, because assuming, right, we have two assumptions, both of which go to Greenwood, are we gonna have, is there gonna be a warranty on those shingles and the cupulas, et cetera? And would they warranty the new fancy-dancy shingles? Assuming their answer to both was yes, and you could determine that you could, to Mr. Alex's point, shingle the cupulas, which he says you can, he's got his hand up, but I'm not gonna acknowledge right now because I'm rolling with this, then the money could go, a portion of it could go for their?
And?
Everybody's, I keep pointing at you guys, I apologize, but for the?
Truly have. We have sixty days of construction at this time, so, having to evaluate and redo this, I'm holding, it's much bigger than just coming back to the board, I, it's the whole schedule.
I trust you to do it. I understand you're asking that, I just wanted to make sure.
I think that that was satisfied, Mr. Weider. If we could do that, it would be a cost savings. I know there'll be a cost savings. I've talked to Gail about it. They didn't recommend it, but they also acknowledged it could be done. So, if we could have a cost savings, it satisfies.
I really like that. I really like that. And then we don't, and you don't need to come, we don't have to reconvene on his vacation.
And you have three people that...
Although we'll do that.
Care and truly want to see the best for the town, and the three of us would have a...
I love that idea.
Joint decision.
I'm jealous. He came up with it.
I know.
If right now, what we're looking at, to go back to change order one, was a potential savings of 40,805, that was to go from copper to aluminum, and you're saying that to go from aluminum to shingle would be...
Will be significantly cheaper.
Even more savings.
Significantly cheaper. So we'd be looking at least covering...
The shing, shingling those cupulas, and that will cost you $48,000.
So you got about a $52,000 savings.
Compared to $60,000, so you could add your 20, plus the 48, and there you got, you got 68, which is still 32, less than 100,000 you were going to spend on copper, so you're $32,000 ahead of the game, if you go with shingles and the cupulas and the monitors, and you do the band on the front of the school.
Is that, is that just materials, though? Or is that all that?
Material and labor.
So then you have more money in the fund for contingencies.
You don't touch your contingency.
And, right, the contingent, more money remains in the contingency. People can still drive by and smile at HOD, even though they would anyway, because it's pretty anyway, but I get where you're coming from. And, and then there's more money for the, it keeps everything on schedule, so you don't lose hair, and, other than thigh and tight. And I think everybody kind of wins a little bit. It's very elegant. I like it.
Yeah, it's a great idea, and the offset is definitely appealing. I, I can't get myself away, though, from thinking about 50 to 75 years down the road. I feel like, you know, you made a great point initially about saying that if we invest the money now, it'll be a savings later on down the road. And granted, I don't think any of us will be hanging around Norfolk still then.
But the shingles, I'm going to chime in before Chris does, the shingles are only 50. So copper being 75, shingles are only 50.
So, all right, so we talked about the 25 years on top of there, and then the maintenance savings that you identified, from one material to the other, right? I just don't feel like we have a great grasp on what that is, you know?
But I think it's probably less than the $62,000.
My perspective is, is I, I care, I mean, my job is to maintain the buildings.
Yep.
And my job is to do it right the first time. My job is not to be frivolous, but my job is also not to do it cheap just to get it done, because it doesn't pay for itself. So I do trust the people that designed it, and I do trust their opinions. And the state does as well, because they're investing millions and millions with these firms. They're good firms, and they do, I mean, they're not guiding us, they're not making additional money on specking this out. The only one who makes additional money would be the contractor, because there's more labor involved, and there's more, contractors make more money, but not, this was done wholeheartedly to do it once, do it right. And that's, I stand on that ground 100%.
And nobody's questioning that, but now you've come up with this great idea, that I understand you have some questions on, but it's vis-à-vis your idea, is I think.
Sure. I mean, I think that would move this along, everybody would kind of have a win as you approached, as you said. Obviously, if it doesn't make sense, I'd want to reconvene and have you guys come back.
We'd come back to you and say, here's why it doesn't make sense.
But if it does make sense that we can do it...
Right, if Greenwood says, we can't do it, we can't warranty it. Or somebody says, the amount of labor to, you know, yeah, we said 20,000, but it's changed, and now it's four, you know, I get it. But let's assume, just for a sec.
How much of the contingency have you already earmarked as being used up? Due to Saturdays?
Sure.
Due to soffits? How much of that have you already used up?
As of right now, I've used about $312.
$312?
Yes.
But what are we going to...
What are you anticipating?
Okay, so Greenwood has shown interest to try to get this job done very fast, before our deadline. They've asked us to work Saturdays, and they've also asked us to work Sundays, which is another question. But at this point, they would like to work Saturdays. So for us to do that, it only benefits us, because if it goes late, we can't have school, we can't have two projects. If you go by there, it's taking up the property, so we have to get this done. So I'm all about having them go gangbusters, because it only benefits us. So the items that I've come up with, I've talked to PMA, or Project Manager, and what we've discussed is potentially working a little bit less during the five-day workweek, so we can compensate on Saturdays, because we're not, we're not paying them 40 hours, we're not going to approach that, so we're trying to flex their hours. So I would anticipate, an honest guess, because I was running numbers earlier, I would say additional funds for them would be under $10,000. We could limit that, but the problem is, is I don't want to limit it too much, because I'd like to have eyes on it, because eyes on contractors are always good ideas.
Them being who?
PMA, their, a project manager, having them to be there on Saturday. So I think we have a basis of the construction schedule of value, where PMA has, for this size job, X amount of hours appropriated in their, within their contract. We are trying to flex it out, so instead of working six hours on a Monday, maybe work five hours, you know, and bump it down, so we can take those hours and switch them over to Saturdays. So we're looking into doing that, but there will be probably a few more hours. So I would say through the seven, no, there's, I think that I counted it out earlier, I think there was 12 Saturdays. We're going to try to flex it, but if there are labor rate for the project manager, I think it's 135. If we had him for a few hours every Saturday on top, I came up with under $10,000, is what I anticipated, and we can also squish that a little bit, and we have the flexibility to...
So Matt, working, PMA working Saturdays, your staff working Saturday?
My staff working Saturday, worst-case scenario, right now, it would be about $6,000.
And then soffit?
Why is your staff working?
Because my staff has to be there to open up the building for them, to undo the burglar alarm, to redo the burglar alarm, to, anytime there's people at the building or in the building, we have staff there to protect the building and monitor the building. My staff is, they give access, arm, disarm, also make sure nothing's gone on inside the building during the construction. If there was ever an emergency, somebody fell, did something, you kind of need to tell me to have access to the building, and to be able to assist the fire department if there was an incident.
So what's that number?
I'm thinking $6,000.
And what do you know, do you know what we're going to spend on soffit repair?
As of right now, they don't have all the metal off, but if, I'm assuming, under $25,000. We're looking at different options, because we could do a change order to Greenwood to have them fix it. We're looking in, it's up to our option how the AIA is written, is I could bring in another contractor, and I could have them do it, but then that opens up coordination with Greenwood, it opens up insurance requirements, it can also open up project unity, and, and so, I get a little bit of a better value, but I'm anticipating under $50,000 at this point.
So a third of our contingency has already been spent.
Thank you, yes. That's what the, what you're trying to get down to, is about 40,000.
And if the elegant idea works, that replenishes that.
We're also working on, and I'm hoping, a decent-sized savings. There was a proposal by Greenwood, who, there's a whole new soffit design, because they've changed, we're insulating the building now, where Greenwood has a simpler solution, and Gail's reviewing it, but right now, they feel that it might be okay with us, or for us in this particular application. And if that was the case, it would save time and money. So we would have to negotiate with them, and we're hoping to get a significant, you know, $10,000 or so, money back as a credit on a redesign in the soffits. So we do, I mean, there is a give and take, and we do listen back and forth, so there is a suggestion, so we are trying to work on that. So we are trying desperately to keep all costs under control, and, you know, listen to both parties. We're also, they signed a contract, which said substantial completions due August 6th. Somehow there was a typo. I saw it as August 12th, but they signed a contract that said August 6th, so they're working desperately to get to that date. We can, we might be able to back that out, which will still not affect the school, and maybe give us a little bit of a credit, which I don't know where we're at this point, and I don't want to air my thought process too much, but we have options, and we're looking to keep costs contained.
Okay.
So to round that all up, very quickly, the current proposal is that the board vote tonight to give the authority to the town administrator essentially, right? To be able to make the call, but...
We share with the superintendent of schools, too, because they both invested...
That's good.
Okay.
I would prefer to be partnered on this decision. No, I think it's important for a lot of reasons.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, so to the superintendent of schools and to the town administrator, to evaluate Matt's research on the replacement of the copper component of the roof project that it stands today, with a shingle that would also include the decorative shingle, based on feedback related to the warranty on both materials. Right?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Your feedback on that.
Yeah, I'll agree with that.
You know I love it. So, well, if somebody else raising their hand in the background.
All right, Mr. Alex, you can have a quick moment, okay?
I got nothing against the design, but are you going to run across the same problem of not having the availability of a 50-year shingle in red? They may not make them.
So the colors are a little bit different now, they're not as solid, they're more of a muted color. They do have red tinges, we're using Certain Teed, which, another thing we, we got to win on. They do have the availability, but we need to procure it right away, so they can get it, because it's not sitting at Snow's, it's sitting all over. So we can get that, it won't be the exact same, but it'll be a close color, so, and it will all be the same exact warranty, it's all the specific, it's...
Just one more.
It's all made, it's the Heritage, I don't know the exact name of it, it's like the professional series Certain Teed, and they have different colors available.
Okay.
Just one more. We, we have a design that comes to a point, which is the worst thing you could do on a sloped roof. Would people go for a design that would look like Legos? In other words, it would come across, step down, same with the red, step up again, step over, instead of coming to a point? Kids love Legos. And I don't believe that would cost us any more money, just the idea of the price...
Bernie, everything costs money. The minute I talk to an architect or anything, they're, they're charging me, I, I don't...
Nowhere, nowhere near the price of putting in the points as to make the Legos, which would go right with the flow of the roof.
Not to disagree with you, sir, but I think that this, they're looking for that design to be put back in, and it might not have the exact same resemblance, but it's going to be as close as humanly possible, so I don't really want to change. If we're going to go this route, let's keep it as close as we possibly can. And yes, it won't, it'll have, where it ends, it's going to end, and it might look funny from different angles, but when you're driving down Main Street and you pull into the property, it should look as close as humanly possible with a new type of shingle.
I'm talking to the design.
I understand, but instead of redoing the design, that the whole diamond shape is the, is the, is the design.
You're redoing, you're redoing all the roof anyway, all the roofs.
We're only doing it in the very front of the building.
Oh, okay.
Just strictly the front of the, as you drive by Main Street, you still see a very similar design. If you pull in, you see it.
The rest is all going to be straight, straight shingle.
Yes. This was a conservative effort to, to keep the feel, the look of the olive day, but minimize the cost, and...
But if the cost couldn't be made, if we can't find the money for it, compromise and change the design, and...
Well, it sounds like, it's not to cut you off, and I apologize for that, but it sounds like we're coming to a point where we're going to be able to accommodate if everything falls into place in terms of material costs and warranties. So, that being said, I'm going on a, on a branch here, because Blythe isn't here to oversee the motion, but...
You can do it.
I would move that the board approve the town administrator and the superintendent of schools to review the information provided by Matt on a substitute material as listed in change order one, instead of aluminum, though, with shingle, to be able to evaluate cost savings and make a executive decision to adjust based on their personal feelings. Personal feelings, professional series?
Can we add into that motion?
Friendly amendment, go ahead.
If any performance issues arise from the engineering team, we will come back and convey it with the board.
Yes.
I think that's important, I don't want to just strictly do it on cost, if it's, if there's any concern.
Okay, so, aside from cost considerations, also...
Performance.
Technical considerations.
Warranties.
I think we all, we both understand what the board's priority is here, and certainly have value the experience that Chris has helped us understand what's important, and if we are going to vary from that, you need to know.
Okay. I think that motion will carry, right?
Second.
Your second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you very much, Matt. Thank you, everybody, for your input, we really appreciate it. Can we take a five-minute recess, please? Can we take a five-minute recess, please?
[MUSIC]
All right, welcome back. The next item on our agenda tonight is to please consider a presentation from the Town Planner and Charles River Watershed Association on DEP Water Management Grant. Take it away, Mr. McCarthy.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have, I'm gonna hand out just a hard copy of the presentation we're gonna go through. I have I already apologized to her before, so I'm gonna do it again. Palve Man.
Palve Yamande.
Welcome.
Unfortunately, I inherited this bad skill from my father of mispronouncing names, so we have under contract with the Charles River Watershed Association through a grant that we applied to earlier this year through the get the title just slowly. Which is, the grant was entitled Integrating Water Smart Planning and Practices. And it was through the Department of Environmental Protection, through the Water Management Act. There's two pieces to, tonight is the second part of it. Last week, we had a we had a workshop for residents on smart landscaping. And the whole notion of the program is to think about water and water usage and better ways to use it smartly because it's a valuable resource. And last week's presentation was about landscaping. Whereas the best practice is to be able to provide the maximum benefit to the plants and landscaping with the least amount of water consumption. So we talked about, you know, soils and plant design and watering plants at the roots. Don't spray with a hose. It's extremely inefficient. There's evaporation that happens and so forth. So that's one aspect. Tonight, we're gonna talk about stormwater related to recharge. And what what Palve's gonna go through the presentation is about smart design as far as integrating ways to recharge the stormwater. Not in more the traditional approach, which was, you know, catch basin pipes to a large basin, either detention or infiltration basin, or even on the ground. This approach to it is more strategic and scattered whereby they become landscape features called rain gardens. And they also promote water quality benefits to it and aesthetic values. And there's a, there's gonna be a Sorry. Let me sit back down. I so the, again, back to the, the design itself. So the, the rain gardens, some can provide more, you know, it could be done by native plants or some more aesthetically, you know, vibrant colors, et cetera. As we go through the presentation, you'll see. And quite honestly, when we go through this, I'm sure people watch and say, you know what, I already have a rain garden in my house and probably didn't realize it, that they're already doing it. And so this is application that we could look at for the town through, and the focus area was in the B1 area, for the downtown area. And the genesis for that was that the town has a stormwater district for downtown where now it's collected in pipes and there's some underground system, but it goes to the, to the town, which the the man pond is no, no, it goes to man pond second. Sorry. Is that right?
Town pond, then man pond.
Town pond, then man pond, sorry. And this approach is more scattered, and we'll go through it. I'll let her go because I know you've been here late. Phase, I'm just gonna do the slide piece of this. I'll let you slow down. Never mind. And then I'll put it over here for questions. And it might happen at certain points, but turn it over to you.
Thank you, Richard, and thank you to the select board for inviting us to present. We're very excited about this project, so I'll try and speed through this presentation to save everybody time. But please feel free to ask questions at the end. As Richard said, my name is Palve Yamande, and I'm the Director of Watershed Resilience at the Charles River Watershed Association. For those of you who don't know how far our watershed extends, the plan on the screen shows where Norfolk is situated. It's in the upper watershed. And we have a stretch of about 80 miles that the water meanders through the river. And it includes 35 municipalities that we serve. Over a million residents, but we are looking at every project that we undertake, whether it's smart water retention conservation at a watershed level. So it really behooves us to look at every municipality and the constraints that they have for water supply as well as introducing green infrastructure to see how we can apply regional approaches to influence local action. For those of you who don't know us, we are a science-based organization. We have staff ranging from policy experts to legal advocacy staff. And our mission is to really steward the river and its watershed from a water quality habitat standpoint, but also help our municipalities to actually take decisions at a watershed level that improve the resource area, but at the same time help them achieve their goals for sustainability. So as Richard pointed out, this particular presentation focuses on this grant that we received with, in partnership with the town to look at how we could include some water smart planning and practices in this project moving forward. And then do this groundwater recharge analysis, which is really critical for not only recharging the aquifers that the town depends on for drinking water, but also introducing strategies that would help with public realm improvement and make streets and properties aesthetically greener and more sustainable. So as Richard mentioned, we received this grant under the DEP Water Management Act. And the two objectives that we are working under are creating awareness about the water smart landscape techniques. And the training that we undertook last week was a big part of that. And the piece that I'm here to present more about is the recharge analysis that we undertook, where we looked at sites all over the downtown area where we could potentially introduce these rain gardens or infiltration basins to make sure the water doesn't run off these paved surfaces and, and ends up being polluted into the, into the river, but actually infiltrates into the ground and recharges the aquifers. So longer term, you have more water supply in the aquifers and that helps with providing more water to the town moving forward. So it's, you might already know the way nature works with, the way water works in nature is very different the way, from the way it works in cities. And the main difference is really the amount that goes through soil and vegetation and infiltrates into the ground versus gets washed off paved surfaces, gets polluted, and goes into impacting resource areas. So our goal here is to replicate the way water works in nature in developed areas. And as we mentioned, groundwater is a huge resource. And not only does it help with, with town water supply, but also recharges our river systems, our streams. So it's critical for us to understand how this hydrology can be improved in developed areas and can help with water supply needs for the municipalities, but also create sustainable systems for the river itself. We all talked about drought management. It's, it's something that the state is very concerned about. And great, we, we did have a very wet spring. And as was noted earlier, we hope that over the summer, this will actually help us create more water recharge. But it's always wise for towns to be proactive in conservation. It's one leg of the stool that we depend on for making sure that the town, longer term, has options. But these strategies that we are proposing will also help with drought management. As I mentioned, it can't be just one option. We are looking at conservation. We are looking at restoration. We are looking at augmenting water supply. And while the state and local regulations exist to keep those checks and balances in place, what we are talking about in terms of recharge for groundwater is a win-win approach. And so we feel like that's something the town can adopt easily and move forward without having too much investment. This is something that was discussed at the earlier agenda, so I'm not gonna take too much time. But the, the message here is the summer water use is still an issue. And as we move forward, we feel like that is something we need to tackle. Knowing that the town is looking at economic development, growth opportunities, and how do we actually balance that with what we want to see for sustainable resource management? So these are strategies that I wanted to talk about. For those of you who know a little bit about green infrastructure, what we are hoping to use is soil and vegetation to actually filter the stormwater, but also make it go into the ground rather than have it run off from parking lots into the resource area, which is bad for water quality, but also doesn't let the water go into the ground the way we'd like to see it. So there are a lot of co-benefits to these strategies. We are looking at better water quality, adding greenery to these paved areas, and also reducing the heat island effect. Richard talked about the training that we undertook last week. We talked about landscape strategies, water, watering best practices, and also looked at what you could do with constructing strategies like rain gardens on privately owned land as well as publicly owned land. And there's more information available, or will be in any case, on the town's website. So I'm not gonna take too much time to talk about it now, but this was also a big part of the grant. So in terms of the recharge site analysis, we looked at a lot of different criteria like soils. And the good news is Norfolk has good soils. So that's a great opportunity for us to capitalize on and actually introduce these green infrastructure strategies that would help to use those great soils and get the water into the aquifers. We looked at topography, land use, redevelopment potential for sites. We know there are certain sites that are hopefully gonna be redeveloped in the near future. And we wanna take advantage of those opportunities to incorporate these strategies as and when those sites do get redeveloped. So this map shows a section on the east for all the sites that we potentially could incorporate these strategies in. And the next I'm sorry. That was the west, and this is the east side. As you can see, we identified a close to 30 locations within the CBD where we think we could incorporate these rain gardens or infiltration basins. And all of this doesn't have, have to happen tomorrow, but the idea is to have this plan in place so when things do get online for redevelopment, we already have a, an approach towards incorporating this. And then that could be translated into the local bylaws as well as recommendations to developers, et cetera, to make those strategies happen. Next. So these are just some visualizations. This is something I do for a living, is convince communities why these green infrastructure strategies are important. And for me, yes, stormwater is important and groundwater recharges. But what really gets people excited about this work is the improvement that it creates to the built environment. So this just demonstrates one potential site that we are hoping to retrofit right outside the town hall. And the idea is to just incorporate these rain gardens. So it's just taking that runoff that's coming off this green area and having it go into the, the ground rather than into the catch basin that you see in front of you. Next one. This is a large development parcel that hopefully will get some, will see some redevelopment in the near future. And the idea is to incorporate green infrastructure in areas that are currently paved or could have these rain garden systems if you wanna proceed to the And it just shows, you know, it's not just for water quality and recharge benefits, but it really helps make these areas a lot more pedestrian friendly and bike friendly. So, next. This is a site right next to the fire station or at the fire station. And we believe that might be redeveloped sometime in the future. And all we are proposing is using this swath of lawn area be converted into a rain garden. And that would not only improve the water quality coming off from this paved section of roadway, but it will add aesthetic appeal, curb appeal, and introduce recharge. And then the last slide is the town-owned site where there is a lot of parking currently happening. This is the old town hall site, and we do observe some amount of flooding and accumulation of water when it rains hard. And the idea is to incorporate, again, a system of rain gardens that would take care of the water that is currently pounding there and treat it before it actually sheet flows into the resource area that's next to it. And with that, I will say thank you to DEP, if you wanna go to the next slide. And the town for being a partner. And hopefully, these recommendations would be considered and incorporated into the next iteration of development and redevelopment opportunities in the town. So thank you. And just a last plug is the next slide.
Next one?
Yes, there is one more. The watershed group is putting together a climate compact for all our watershed towns. And we've sent invitations to all the municipalities to join this because we'd like to see regional solutions that would benefit each municipality. And there are opportunities that we feel can be undertaken at a regional level. Might not be all just happening because of local efforts. So we'd love to have Norfolk join us on the compact as well. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
So to weave things together a little bit briefly and then add some questions, I'm sure. We actually did send, I believe, Blythe to, to join the compact. So we have done that already. Step one, number one. As we move forward, and you'll hear more about our MS4 permit for our stormwater and different things that we need to look at and take care of. Stormwater is becoming more and more of an emerging utility in a way, and something that towns and cities throughout the country are, have to pay more attention to and think about how it's handled, treated, maintained, et cetera. And as we move forward as a town, the need for us to be better at maintenance is gonna increase over time with the permitting. And what we're trying to do with some of these things is, instead of using some of the traditional methods, provide some other additional benefits to handle stormwater. And this is one aspect of it. I was involved with quite a few different private projects where, you know, well-designed rain gardens, like I said, you see this one in the picture, can provide aesthetic value. Now, this is obviously, this is robust in plants, and there's some perennials, and there's maintenance involved with that, but But one of the things from our meeting last week, the Norfolk Garden Club, I guess the theme this year for across the state is looking at more native plant species. And so some of these rain gardens can be planted with more native species, which might require less maintenance than some of the other ones. So depending on the application, we'll have to look at different things. But it's a way to provide two benefits and as opposed to some of the older techniques. The one, if I go back, I just want to show you just from our presentation last week. Where's the one? This one here. So the question came up about traffic calming when we did the workshop. And some towns, what they have done, where they have a large, the roadway is very large, and to try to help with walkability, what they have done is they have ripped up pavement, and then they had center islands, which now has plants, which is collecting some of the stormwater, is providing recharge, a respite for people to be able to walk, plus provide some aesthetic value. So that's kind of when you see in the bottom of that slide, the whole concept of traffic calming, that they start to add those things as amenities. And it does, you know, this visually looks nice to be able to walk by, so it provides interest. So with that, I'll, you know...
If you go forward to the one that's right for the entrance to the fire station, just to use it as an example. There. Right?
Yep.
And you can even just go forward one. I'm just curious, and I'm just using it as an example, what the ROI? There. So that seems like it would be, that's a significant-sized garden that would require somebody or somebodies on the town payroll to plant with plants that have been purchased by the town, right? And so my question's twofold. One, what would that one singular garden run, give or take? And what's the ROI? Like, how much, how much would that one singular garden provide in terms of recharge? So that I can then sort of extrapolate outwards, in order to really impact the town, we're now spending, like, bearing in mind our budget. What are we talking about?
Right.
Great question. So the idea is, yes, the return on investment is going to be really the co-benefits that are provided by having these kinds of strategies put in place. But the expectation is not that you build these systems exactly at scale that have been shown. So for instance, in other municipalities, we've partnered with the town where the local garden club has taken on not only the planting with volunteers, but also with some level of expectation of maintenance, also agreed to do that for the town. So we've had a lot of success with Franklin, Bellingham, and a few other municipalities. We've done these projects as a public-private partnership. And the idea is, if the town is receptive and is bought into taking these strategies on, it can be phased in. And the expectation is this is probably going to take five to seven years. But if we can prioritize certain projects that we know are going to be coming onboard, either for a parking lot repavement or some sort of other maintenance, this would be incorporated within that. So you're not sort of looking at pricing this out on its own. It's just a matter of the capital improvement.
Makes sense.
Investment.
But how much does that, so, but again, just going to this, like, this tract, like, if you had an area, and I appreciate now that we're talking about maybe modulating costs with volunteerism and et cetera, but my, the second part is if you have a rain garden of roughly that size, what benefit does that one sized, so that I can extrapolate out, that sized garden do for how much, how much, how many gallons of water is that going to provide the town?
Sure. And the report we're going to do as part of this will provide an answer. I can just tell you a broad range of all the sites that we've looked at. We've gotten up to a million gallons per year of recharge estimated.
Based on one garden or on a town's all infrastructure?
All the sites that we looked at, all the sites. And this is just one of them.
Okay.
But when, when we are ready to put the report, you can actually see it side by side.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's also important that this is a tool in the toolbox to help cost-avoid, if you will, water going into the storm drains. Because the federal EPA MS4 permit that we're now obligated to follow and that we're estimating is going to cost fifty thousand dollars a year, I mean, we just passed fifty grand in, in, you know, in May, and we're going to keep doing it every year to meet the requirements of mapping every single storm drain and testing what goes into the drains and figuring out what we're doing with the outfalls and maintaining those. Basically, the EPA has taken the same approach to stormwater that they did way back in the day for water. Now, we want stormwater to be clean, and we want it going into recharge areas, and to the point where it's becoming an expense for every community. And there are some communities have even started stormwater utilities and charge every property owner based on the amount of impervious surface, roofs, driveways that they have, to help pay for keeping up with all this. So a garden is a, maybe not a huge way, but it's a good way to start to try to cost-avoid a little bit of that.
But does that, so does the EPA's strictures account for an offset for a rain garden? Or do you still have to pay the fifty thousand to test out everything?
You still have to do all that stuff. You're just maybe putting less stuff into those systems. And that's not a bad thing if you're trying to develop more and be able to better use the systems that you have to redirect water because you really want to see a office building over here or a restaurant over there. So it's, you know, unfortunate, it's, I don't know if you think it's an exciting topic, but it's a really critical topic these days.
Right. No, 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 I get it. I just was curious what the dollars in, dollars out. That's what I wanted.
Yeah, so the, so right now, with our local regulations, we regulate based on the volume, pre and post, when you develop a site, as well as the rate, and those are two things. Now Norfolk has been, for many years, ahead of the curve when it talks about regulating the volume. Now, there's other towns that are trying to catch up with Norfolk in the sense of volume. It was always the rate, but now you're managing those two things. And this is, is part of the whole stormwater design, is an aspect of it potentially, as opposed to, right now, we have a significant amount of stormwater infrastructure that's underground, that isn't as easily to find when you have a problem and so forth. So there's, you know, part of the maintenance scheme, the more of these things that are visually, you know, part of the system to add into it. So this one, this is just a good retrofit.
No, 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 I'm just trying, I just, that's something that I can, scale-wise, I can wrap my brain around. So that's why I was using that as...
Yeah, no, I agree.
For instance, scale. Is it something that you could see, and maybe you've already considered this, and maybe that's, that if somebody comes in and says, "I want to develop XYZ property commercially," and we're all like, "Woohoo." You could say, "But we really look forward to your plans for rain gardens."
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yes.
Trying to get someone else to pay for it.
Well, again...
Yeah, no, so...
Without, without keeping people from wanting to build here.
Less impervious surface achieves the goal.
Right.
Right. So there might be, in this case, we have some of these things, and there might be some adjacency where, you know, we have an existing stormwater problem, somebody comes in, and we're able to work within the corporate. So yes, yeah, so that's kind of the, again...
I guess, all right, that's all. That was, I just, the reason, as I said, the reason I, only reason I picked that one was because I could wrap my brain around the fact that you have a set number of square feet that have been gardened.
Yeah, and I admit, that's, that's beautiful, but that's, there's a lot of...
I know what it looks like, but yeah.
There's a lot, there's a lot of maintenance to that particular design. So that's why I said you got, we have the idea of, you know, how you...
More grass, less...
Yeah, how you plant it.
There's sun roses that just you leave alone, and they just, or ghost them, whatever.
Chris?
Great. Keep moving forward.
Absolutely. I had the opportunity to attend a discussion in Newton last month. That was fantastic, with other boardists, like, members from communities that are included in the association. So it was great to be able to hear their kind of ideas on what they're doing as well. Very good. Well, thank you so much again for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. And we'll, we'll be working shortly to put this presentation up, also the pamphlets on water conservation on the website, too, to share those.
Beautiful. Thank you, Rich. All right. Our next item on our agenda is discuss comments from the owner of 194 Main Street regarding town process to enforce bylaws. I'm told that this will be coming up on July 9th?
We would need to move it to July 9th. Yes, the, this person was here until the break and had some obligation, had to go attend to, so asked if we could move it till the 9th and find, try and find a time a little earlier on the agenda to...
Absolutely.
So we'll do that.
Anybody have any position thoughts? Okay, beautiful. All right, so we'll hear from that person on the 9th. Next up. Please discuss a process to address, repair, or replace a fire station. Leight, you supplied us with a very thorough recommendation and memo.
Yes. So now that we're wrapping up the police station, we're going to talk about where we go to actually finish that project a little bit later in the meeting. It seemed important to stop and talk about what, how we should approach what we're going to do with the fire station. And I wanted to start on this without making an assumption that we're absolutely going to replace it or repair it, or its current location or somewhere else. I actually wanted to go back many steps before that to say, you know, unfortunately, not everybody thinks that, you know, I think my impression is not everyone thinks that the police station went as well as it could, that things happened that caused us to have to spend more time following up on that. And how can we turn our attention to the fire station, which definitely has need, and have a successful project there? And so what I suggested is to start all the way from the beginning, is to, is to, is to thank the building committee who was in place and have them move on, not because I don't think they couldn't do it, I just think if we're going to be fair to the next project we have to, to address, we want to do it with a fresh set of eyes, with confidence in the, in the folks that the board wants to appoint, that they're the right group to see this through. And suggesting to you that, you know, we have to think about the number of members and who would be on it. I've given you some thoughts I have on that, but it's obviously something that's up for discussion. I think I found value over the years in having people with the types of disciplines that bring to bear this, the expertise that help us make a good decision beyond a committee. I was very fortunate when I was in another community to have the head of facilities for a, you know, worldwide corporation happen to live in our town, and it was invaluable what that person brought to the decisions we made about heating systems and, you know, lighting and all those sorts of things, and what they mean to running a building. But from there, I'd actually, it kind of diverged back to the process the town followed for the police station, because that's what's required by state law, that you have an OP, an owner's project manager or OPM when you are renovating or building a project worth a million and a half dollars. We had one, the police station, we have one on the roof. You know, did we pick the right firm the first time? Maybe we didn't, and we would, we would, again, start there. Because that company's job is to be our, our eyes and ears and our guide through the process of then hiring an architect and making sure we hire the best person for that, and going then through a feasibility study. And for me, it's, it's going all the way back to the beginning, not assuming that the decisions that were contemplated with the fire station in the recent years are exactly what we should be doing. Should it be in the place that it is, or should it not? Should it be renovated, or should it be built new? You know, is the, if there was a design thought about, but is that the right one for where we're headed? You were going to have a new fire chief in the coming months, and, you know, that person, you know, will have thoughts on it. So I would basically, I would track through that project, that process again, but I would form a new team to do it. And then I think the feasibility study is absolutely critical to ask all the questions, and I probably didn't even list every question I would ask in, in section four, so that we can then have whatever process with other boards, with residents, you know, coffees, public meetings, whatever is helpful to help everyone understand why we think the project should be a certain way, in a certain location, costs a certain amount, and take the time that we need to be able to help everyone be comfortable that we've thought about it from every which way possible, that we have made choices that are fiscally responsible, going to be, meet our needs in the building for the next number of years, the types of equipment we need in Norfolk. And we've thought about how we're going to operate while we do that. I mean, I know we were going to move to the DPW, but I would rethink that, too, not because I don't know that it's the right decision, but again, I think it's important to start all the way from the beginning. And because at some point, we're going to very likely need additional appropriation. The original building, the original project was fourteen million for one or two buildings, and the first one cost more than seven. So here we are, hoping to recoup some money from that first project to put back into this, but it won't be enough. I'm, I think I can sit here confidently and say that. I don't know what the number's going to be, but when we get to that town meeting, I want people to say, "Nope, I don't like it. Not happy that we're, you're asking for more money, but I, you've done your homework. We feel confident it's the right decision, and we're going to vote for it and move it forward." And if that's in a year, or two, or three, how long is it going to take to make that choice and people to feel that way? And how are we going to take care of our employees and the equipment that we have today in the station that we have? Are we fixing it on some level? Are we moving out of it into something else on site for some period of time? I mean, while I'm, I'm loath to not want to spend any more of that money that we need to rebuild or replace the station, at least we have the money to do that initial look and, and be able to know what our path forward is. So that's my major overview. And I'm interested in your thoughts on this and what you would like to do.
Some of this, I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse, and maybe the answer's already out there. What is left from the police station? Do we know the number of how much money is left from the fourteen million dollars that was appropriated to the police station and fire station?
It's approximately two point eight four million dollars.
That's what's left.
Yes.
In the first paragraph, yeah.
Okay, yes. So that, so there is not enough money to build a fire station?
I'm confident, I would, I would say, no, there isn't.
The fire station, I think, was slated at six million dollars, wasn't it?
I've heard somewhere between seven and eight, and that may not include whatever needed to be done to DPW to make that...
No, 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 this was originally, when we, when the town approved a new police station and a fire station renovation, what was the money appropriated for the fire station?
I'm going to have to rely on...
The initial anticipated budget was four point eight for construction with all hard and soft costs and one point two, I'm sorry, four point eight with all costs included, including of that, one point two million dollars for site work. So the initial budget altogether was four point eight. The original plan that was designed by the fire department, with that budget in mind, it wasn't enough to build the building to begin with, once we started laying it out and factoring. Money from today is a lot different than money from 2014, when this was all came about, so, but it was four point eight.
So yes, whatever way you slice it, it's not enough.
Not enough.
Yep.
Okay. So that's where we got to start, is that originally it was going to cost four point eight to renovate the existing fire station. Now we're two point eight, so clearly, we don't have enough money to do this.
And, and I don't know that the, the design then was, is the design that's appropriate today, especially when we have to be, be a little more careful about asking for any more. I mean, we have to make some choices that maybe we weren't going to need to make then if we were able to do the police station for what we thought. Those choices may be a little fewer. And that's the direction the board's got to give about, you know, where you want to go with this project and how much, you know, how much are we going to go back and... much are we going to go back and ask the voters for at some point?
What do we own already for the fire station? Obviously, we did some site work over there, so we own that.
Mm-hmm.
Do we own any plans? What else do we own?
We have a very basic floor plan, is, is what I understand.
At this point, we have done 100 and, approximately 130,000 dollars worth of site work, which included the mass rock removal, and we have about 60,000 dollars in the architect's contract of billed services.
50,000 dollars' worth of architectural drawings?
About 60, I believe. No, there's the whole, it's not just go to drawing, they have to do the feasibility study, which is part of their contract, they have to do, they have to work with the department and find out what needs to happen, what their desires, their needs are. So, there's a lot of time spent with the fire department to get to the stage where they can even come up with a scheme, and come up with their square footage, needs and designs, so that's all been billed already.
Yeah, so there would be a situation where, you know, if you're starting again, then you, you are spending money a second time with a new team to revisit, but you're now going to have a new chief. You know, are you going to have two ambulances in the future of the size we have today, or the trucks going to be, be bigger or smaller? How many staff do you contemplate? All those sorts of questions you would, the downside is you'd spend that money again with someone else to make those decisions. But I weigh that against the confidence level of the firm that was first engaged, and I, what I hear is that's not a good outcome, that that, that, unfortunately, we spent that money, but there's no confidence that that firm is going to be able to do this project for us the way we need to, and we need to look elsewhere.
So, that, that was going to be my question, is the architecture, the 60 grand was to the architect who was responsible for the roof issue on the police station?
It was contracted for both projects.
Right. So, so it's my understanding, then, if you basically say, hey, architect, we think you're so great, we want to finish, you, like, I think you have to walk away from the 60 and try to recoup it as part of any litigation posture on the fire.
Right. We need to talk about it under the next item on the agenda.
Right. But I, I don't think, I, I don't think, it's unfortunate, but I agree. I think you have to walk away from the 60 from that architecture firm, because it's from that architecture firm.
Right, you do.
Notwithstanding the fact that...
That's a definite downside to this strategy.
Right. Unless you find another really stuperty-duper nice architecture firm who's like, sure, we'll, we'll piggyback on what they did, but then you'd want them to, you're going to have to pay them to make sure it's, there's, it's not a snafu.
And that came up during the police station, as I understand it. So, again...
Right.
I think it's, it's building the confidence, again, that this is a...
I like the idea of going back to the beginning.
Appropriate, it, it's, I hate to retread ground, I hate to spend money twice, I mean, that does, it bothers the heck out of me, but when I weigh it against the confidence level that we were, had a good design, and it was appropriate for the town, and could afford it, I feel like we have to rethink those things, and, and with a new board and a new chief, the, the priorities may be different than they were then.
And based on that, I think I agree as well with the direction in your first option here, and thanking the building committee for all the work that they did to get things to where they are today, but identifying that there is inherent benefit in coming in with a new set of eyes. I especially like the suggestion to utilize residents who have specific backgrounds in some of these key functions that will help utilize and allow us to lean on their expertise to be able to move these things forward and ensure that we're covering our bases as much as possible.
You know, I didn't want to have, as much as I value the work of the town employees, I think they have a job to do...
Right.
And a role to play, but it, they need to be supporting the building committee in review of plans and, and answering questions and following through on details, but it shouldn't be as part of the committee.
Yeah.
The committee needs to be able to answer, roll to the three of you, that they're, they're carrying out the mission that you gave them, and employees should be in a separate, in a separate role. I mean, you could even argue that the town administrator shouldn't be on the committee, and I'm fine with that. I mean, I throw that out there, it's just something for you to think about. You know, it's most important that we have the right team to, to lead us through this, and whether this, that position, I think the fire chief needs to be on, regardless...
Absolutely.
But whether my position even is, is something I think you should debate. I will do it either way, I'll support it either way, but I can appreciate why, you know, every community likes to handle these things differently, and I think you should think about that.
So, right now, we're just, this, we're in the mull posture right now.
We're in the mull posture, and I think if...
Like mulling.
And, and, you know, and the timing, I think it's also important. Do we want to wait till we've gone through what we're going to talk about next on the police station and come to a conclusion before we even seat a committee? Or do we, you know, mull a little longer and then come up with a, a building committee and a charge to them and, and get them going? The only reason I'm, I'm keen on getting them going is, we, you know, we still have the issues with the station.
Right.
Matt can talk through us, us into tomorrow morning about what's going on, what has been done, what could be done, and, you know, some concern of the employees who work there about that, so that's the only thing that makes me want to move ahead a little sooner, but I'm very sensitive to, it's just not the time, folks. We need to, you know, maybe task staff with sorting that out in the short term, and we're just going to wait on a committee until you all think is the right time to start that again. And it's almost a more policy and political question than it is anything else.
That's the hard part.
Chris, your feelings on the committee?
Nope. I think, I think the other, new committee. Did you have a chance to jock to George Cronin today?
I, I'm seeing him at 8 o'clock tomorrow morning.
Because I think he has expressed an interest in, in being on this new committee, and, and I think that's someone, we may want to have someone who's been part of the whole process, maybe, to be there. Sometimes the devil you know is better than devil you don't, and where he's witnessed what happened at the police station.
Yes. Oh, I, I appreciate that very much.
Worthwhile having that set of eyes, and maybe with a different board, different perspective, looking at that. And I agree, any residents in town? I know Ernie's back there chomping at the bit to join this committee.
Oh, Ernie just wants to join.
And others. We certainly want people with a background, this time.
That's joining.
To be able to, again, update the board. Again, it's the OPM's responsibility, it is the contractor's responsibility to provide us with the product.
Mm-hmm.
It is our job to review it and to review change orders, so it, it should be a smooth process. It should not be as cumbersome and as difficult as the police station was, for whatever reason.
Mm-hmm.
So, yes, I agree with it.
Now, when I first read this, it was my first thought to say, well, why don't we wait until we get a fire chief, a solidified new fire chief, and then build the committee from there?
Mm-hmm.
But right now, we're projecting that that's probably not going to happen until end of summer?
I'd say sometime in September.
Sometime in September.
By the time, we may choose somebody by end of summer, but by the time they actually get here and...
Get acclimated?
Get, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I trust, trust me, that takes a little bit, so...
So, I don't know if I'm so keen on that anymore. I feel like there, that we need to maybe think about doing something before that point with our interim fire chief, and maybe think about having this be in place before then.
Well, like I say, I, I don't, I didn't expect any decisions tonight, I just wanted to start to think about it and, you know, put it on a future agenda, so we can decide when you think is the right time, and it may take, take a little while to find the right mix of people to serve on the committee.
Yeah, the summer's not exactly the best recruitment point.
No, no.
And we want to be mindful of that 2.84 million dollars. We don't want to spend it like we have an open checkbook...
Right.
And just start spending money out of that. I know there's a lot of things here to talk about. We have the funding, we have the funding.
Well, we have 2.84, but anything we spend...
We do, but I don't want to waste it.
Exactly.
Because the voters voted it in for a fire station, not for more study.
Oh, I get that very...
Yeah.
Very clearly.
Yeah. So, we've got to be very mindful of that.
Yep. Absolutely. So, that, like I said, that, it's just some thoughts for now.
Thank you for those.
Well, it's very thorough and complete. Thank you. Mr. Alex.
Just a couple of statements. I built a fire station in Clinton. Town of Franklin hired me to oversee their fire station on King Street. I drew up a fire police station that would be going right where the CVS is. At one time, we were going to go in there. When I was in Franklin, I was saw 241 million dollar schools. The first one was built new, saved nothing. It was on a virgin site, took all the trees down, put it up. We came in a million and a half, under on the budget, and we came in a couple of weeks ahead of time. That was on Lincoln Street. We went down to Oak Street, put up a 41 million dollar school again. They wanted to save this, save that, save these walls, save something else. When I retired and left there, we were better than 5 million dollars over budget, and it was better than two years behind schedule. I plead with you, do not try to save that fire station. If you talk to people older than me, and there are a few in town, they used to ice skate where that fire station is. If you walk out, that used to be a perennial pond. We have a 300,000 dollar septic system out in the back there that is right near water level. We're going back to, we need sewerage in the town, because that is going to fail. That's more money we're just going to throw down the drain. But whatever you do, tear that building down, you're going to get it built faster and better if the general contractor doesn't have to stop. Every time he comes across something and go to the architect and the engineers, then they have to go to the town for more money to fix something they didn't know was there? Tear it all down, that we'll know exactly what's there and build a new one.
Thank you.
On, on that note, is the fence that's up there, is there any reason why we continue to leave that fence up? It's a bit of an eyesore. The weeds are all around it. The grass doesn't get cut. Is there any reason why we leave that fence up, and are we paying for it monthly?
I'll have to ask, turn to my expert.
The fence is up because of the sheer, the vertical face on the...
You have to speak up.
The fence was left there. It's about 2,400 dollars a year to keep it there. We have concern about the vertical face on the back of the property, where, we're afraid somebody could fall over. So, what we've done is tried to exclude anybody from going on the property, otherwise, the people are on the private property. We have a snow fence back there, we're just trying to keep people off it, because it's not, we don't want them getting hurt. It's not necessarily landscaped properly, so we didn't want people trying to just get on it and start using it as a field, because it's rock and whatnot in there, was to try to limit any exposure that the town might have at a cost of about 2,400 dollars a year.
Can we maintain it, then? I mean, right now, it looks like a big weedy mess.
That would be a, that would be a DPW. I don't do grounds. Problem is, is I think if we're going to maintain it, we'd have to be very careful, because there are sharp edges on there. Basically, after we had it leveled, blasted, I had them just take some, some of the tailings and kind of smooth it over, and it's not a finished grade. We put a, I think I spent 1,400 dollars to have it seated, just to try to keep dust control down, when that was all completed, but it's not a, it's something that we just didn't want people on, because it's exposure to the town for somebody to get hurt over there, because it isn't finished.
So, it sounds like something that we could talk to Bob about.
Yeah, I have a meeting with DPW tomorrow on other topics, I'll bring that up.
Okay.
Okay, so, from here, we don't have an action. We have an outline, and we have some direction. I think we're all in agreeance about the direction for the building committee, but we'll regroup, we'll regroup again on what that outline is going to look like, and what that charge is going to look like, and when we're going to execute.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else on the fire station?
Nope.
Chris, CC? No? Not seeing anything else in the crowd, so we'll move on to...
Are there any issues with the fire station that have to be addressed now, why they're still in there?
Well, that's what I would think, I would like to work on with Matt and with, with the interim chief, to talk about what the options are. If we're not going to seat a committee right away, I think we do need to talk about that and get a recommendation amongst the three of us to come back to you and say, we recommend X or Y to be able to operate for the year or two or plus that it's going to take for us to get to a point where we're building a new station, if that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Good question, Chris. All right. Next item is to please discuss the closeout process for the police station.
So, in your packet is an overview of what steps we've taken so far and what we recommend. We have received through various means, names of six different attorneys who are specialized in construction litigation. It isn't a practice specialty of, of our current firm. It does not seem to be necessarily a specialty of most municipal type firms, and we have, I've spoken with several of them on the phone, and what I've learned is that, and they've all had the same answer, which is, we need to spend some money out of the 2.84, most likely, and this came up at town meetings, I recall, to hire a firm who does this particularly, as well as a peer review architect, to go through...
As an expert.
The whole process, you know, everything that we've done, and identify where the current architect did not take the appropriate, you know, caution and control, and may, may have had some errors and omissions that led to us to have costs higher than we should have had. On the good news front, the, Matt and I had a meeting with our contractor on the project, who is very closely aligned with us about what they think happened that caused the town to cost more, cost more money. And they're going to sit down, and they're going to go through all of that and provide us with their recommendation and their experience of what happened and why, and what they think the value is to the town, because at the end of the day, the change orders were about 35 percent, and in a project like this, it should have been in the neighborhood of five to seven, maybe 10. And so, with that, you know, with, with Matt, who was in, absolutely in the middle of it throughout most of the construction, and the contractor, who also was, they were going to have, we have an excellent opportunity to get, utilize that knowledge, along with another, outside architect and a litigator, to help us understand what we paid for and would have had to anyway, whether we liked it or we didn't like it, what we shouldn't have paid for, what was done incorrectly, designed incorrectly, not designed at all, caused us to have additional costs, so that we could file a demand with the, their insurance company for errors, their errors and omissions policy. That's the first step, and, you know, it's going to take somewhere in that amount of money to do, and then, from there, you know, we, hopefully, we can settle it out to something that we're comfortable with, but if we can't, the contract that the town signed with the architect did not provide for arbitration. Whether, you know, they might be, their, their insurance company might be willing to entertain an arbitration process, but they don't, they're not required to. So, then, the discussion point for the board is, do we want to spend more dollars to recoup, you know, some amount of money and go to litigation, which, as I understand, it could take anywhere from one to three years, cost 30, 40, 50,000 dollars more, and we need to weigh, and you brought this up at the last meeting, Chris, you know, how much am I going to spend to get, you know, I don't want to spend a little bit to get a little bit more. You want, I want to make sure that that's a good decision, and that's something that we need help to determine. So, I think we've got a two-step process, and, and working with, with Matt, with the town council, with others, we come to a recommendation to the board, because you need to appoint counsel, and you would need to appoint special counsel for this. We bring that forward, we decide to do that, we, we rely on them to help us find the architect, and we get to the demand process. We see where we're at, we see where that goes, and then, depending on how that goes, we then decide whether we take the second step to go further and, and either arbitrate or litigate this. There's been a lot of questions about, you know, did we spend, what we spent, was the location, the right location was, do we spend a, you know, a fair amount to buy that building? Was the roof designed correctly? You know, there are all kinds of, the tower, the doors, I mean, I'm, I'm sure we could all add to that. To me, I don't know exactly how long the demand process would take, but I think we'll learn a lot in that whole process, and I'm wondering if that will align well with the timing of a special town meet, it's a special town meeting in the fall, and whether we'd be at the point where we could have an article that would be a report to town meeting about the police station, where we get up and we make a presentation. We try to... We try to answer the questions about what went wrong, why did it go in this direction versus that, what have we learned and how are we going to do it differently? You know, that may factor into when we seat this next committee, you know? Do we want to wait till that's done? I mean, again, that's, I have to punt that back into your court, but... So I wanted to at least open with that and find out if that's what you're thinking, or you, you know, from your talks with others, there's other angles we want to look at so we can investigate those.
You know, there was an email from a resident who was asking questions about the police station in particular, and asking for some sort of forum to be able to field those kind of questions. I do think that's something that's structured and already existing, like a special town meeting would probably be most appropriate, like you highlighted here. But the other consideration is the discovery work that needs to go into being able to provide the most clear-cut picture of exactly how we got to the point where we are today. And I think that what you're highlighting in the top here is exactly what we need to do to be able to get that kind of outline.
Yep.
So, thank you for putting that together.
I agree, and I think that what's nice about it is that, to your point, if you want to litigate, and the only way you're going to know, if, I think most people would like to litigate if it's possible to recoup if it's not a Pyrrhic victory, right? Nobody wants a Pyrrhic victory. But if it's possible to litigate, you're going to want to know what the parameters are. Is it actionable and for how much? And the only way you're going to do that is with the first part of this process. It's the only way. And so what's nice is that that stinks, but you will then know, we will know, and at the same time, that same information can be used to seed the meeting in terms of answering some of the questions. But it may not answer all.
Right.
So we probably want to talk about, maybe not right this second, but I know we had sort of talked about what is, what, how else do we get, and what other information is there? And now maybe we don't ask that question until we've done the due diligence on this particular piece.
Yeah, I mean, like the question about the choice to buy that parcel and the price paid for it and the eminent domain decision that was, you know, we're going to go that route.
Right, that's a different...
You know, that's a difference. It's going to be outside of this. That's where I'm going to need to rely on those who are on the committee, you know, the attorneys involved at the time. It was a different firm than our current firm, who, you know, I can, I actually know that attorney from that firm, and I can call her and say, hey, you lived this, you know, help me understand how the town got to this point. So having to do that due diligence will help us answer the question. It may not, people may not like the answer at the end of the day, but it will...
And it may not, right. It's, but it's facts. It's information. It may not tend to more or less respond to the overarching, what the heck happened.
Right, well, which is why I go back to whole new committee.
Right.
Or mostly new committee.
Right.
So I'm going to keep working on that process.
I think one, you definitely need to have a special town meeting, and I don't know, I don't know if the special town meeting is part of the fall town meeting.
It could be a separate one.
I think it may have to be a separate one because I think there's certain people interested and a number of people interested in this that maybe aren't as interested in our Warren articles. And I think you can run it as an old-fashioned town meeting and to discuss just this fire station debacle, as we'll call it. So I don't know if it has to be part of the fall town meeting, but I think you definitely have to have a meeting.
Have some, yeah, it could be just...
But obviously, it's got to be fact-based, not just opinion-based.
Yes.
I would probably like to just take a step back and say, I'd like to see what BC Construction comes up with. I mean, $10,000 to $25,000 is not going to buy you much in architect peer review or legal review. I'd like to see what BC says. I mean, if BC is so willing to help us, let me know what, let me tell us what the costs were that made us 25% over budget and put a dollar value to it, since they're willing to help.
And they will, but I think we, in order to have the best claim and the best demand, we will have to have someone who's not, who was not involved in the process be able to review what BC does and say, and the plans and all the, you know, the logs, and be able to say, yep, I understand what the contractor said, but here's why I don't think that that's an actionable amount you're going to recover. Or absolutely, you're going to recover that.
If BC comes back and says, well, I found $250,000 worth. Do you then go, where do you go from there? $250,000 is going to be eaten up real quick in legal fees, architects' fees, and any kind of litigation, whether it be to an insurance company or through the court system. So you have to make that decision, or we do, at that point. What is the dollar value? As I said long ago, what's the upside?
Yep.
I don't want to, I don't want to chase pennies.
Well, they can give us a, their version of, they're, they're...
And they may be on the high side.
Maybe the high side, and then we, then we take the, then we hire the...
Then we decide, okay.
The attorney and the architect to say, here's, here's, you know, this has been provided to us by our partner, now we need you to look at it, maybe it will cost a little less with being able to package it nicely.
Yeah.
And we, then we decide we're going to file a demand for X.
Yeah.
Or we're not.
I mean, if BC says it's $100,000, at what point, you know, do we want to spend 25 on attorneys to try to get 75? I mean, you got to, you got to...
Well, I understand, that's what, that's what...
And that's why I'd rather see what BC says first, equate that into a dollar value, then let the board look at that, then we make a decision to go forward with peer reviews from architects and...
If you're not the roof, right, so you would just add, so if BC comes back and says, yeah, the change orders that I took issue, that we took issue with, or maybe it's change orders in totem equal $300,000 or $200,000 or $50,000, plus the roof, which was what, $450?
Yeah, I think it's at least a six-figure number.
So...
So I think, at the end, from what I've heard from them, at the end of the day, it will be worth spending 10 to 25, if that's what it is.
It's going to be more than, I, we, we all, we all know what we've been doing. I mean, how much does running gun cost the town in Norfolk?
But that's actual litigation.
How much is 144 Seacom Street with the Conservation Commission costing the town in Norfolk? Every one of these is over $25,000, $30,000, and they're all going into two years. This is, this is not, $25,000 is not going to buy you this. So I don't like to use a figure, 10 to 25,000, when every litigation this town is in right now is way over $25,000.
To quote you, this is my area, this isn't a retainer to litigate. This is the retainer for the legal, for the firm to go out and hire their expert and say, do we have a case? That's it. Just do we have a case? What are the parameters of the case? How much would we win? Not to litigate, not to file a single, like, some people will think, to your point, they'll think, oh, this is my retainer, and now we're off to the races. And then they'll be like, what do you mean? I still have to do another retainer. This is just to research whether or not it's worth filing an action.
No, I understand, I understand completely.
So it wouldn't be two years, three years. It would just be 10 to 20, just for that one tiny little, which seems ridiculous, right? Like, oh my God, you're going to spend 10 to 25,000. But to your earlier point, architects cost money, experts cost money, and they're going to want to look through everything at whatever their hourly rate is. And that's why it's, the retainer is as high as it is. But it's not, it wouldn't go over that because you would, we would presumably say, all right, whatever the retainer is, that's how much time you guys have to come back with a product.
If they come back and say, sorry, we don't have enough money, we have to do more research.
Well, I think we start with what you suggested. We ask BC to do that work, and we see enough for them...
That's all I'm asking, let's see what BC comes up with.
Because, you know, as the several attorneys I talked to said, there's always a two to one in these things, and the good thing is, you already have a clear two to one. Your contractor is very much on your side. It's not always typical about what happened and the town wasn't treated fairly. They can't go and sue them because they don't have the contract with the architect. So they want to see us be successful. It doesn't help their pocket at all, but they feel that passionately about what happened, and that's a very positive thing that we can take advantage of.
I have no problem going with having BC look at this first, but I'd certainly like to look at those numbers before we move forward.
So in that case, I mean, if BC comes back with something substantially lower than we anticipate, right, and we even throw that into the roof and we establish, hey, we might not even want to go down this $10,000 or $25,000 route. That would be one of the possible outcomes, right?
Right.
Okay.
So we will, I think they've already started, I have to look at Matt. Have we started doing that work yet?
The owner of BC Construction, Mike Crest, and I have had many conversations on this topic already. He's dealing with personal family matters at this moment, so we haven't started our full review, but we have everything very well documented in change orders, and you can clearly see what evolved. The interesting thing, though, is we also have a partner in this building, and a lot of their poor designs cost the town, for their build-out, cost the town money to incorporate the design. So it's not just a strict, clear, it's a, it's a very tedious review because a lot of things tied in together. So we will do that. We are anticipating in the six figures, if higher, I would assume, but I don't want to give, but I think it's a very good avenue to go down from my knowledge of the project to invest not only BC's time, invest the original, the appropriated money, because I think it'll pay dividends.
BC's doing this at no cost, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Like I said, they're really...
BC was a good partner in this project. There's a lot of things that happened. We had a poor design, and it affected a lot of, a lot of things downstream. We, it's easy to Monday morning quarterback, there's a whole bunch of process that the committee wasn't, when you select a designer, you don't do it off a bit low bid, you do it off a qualification base. So they did everything properly. Unfortunately, the OPM firm that they hired, who was recommended, the minute the ink dried, the whole company got bought out, and everybody they signed with left, jumped ship. So that was, that was a problem there. The architect didn't fulfill obligations that he should have and didn't do a good job. BC, though made more money as a contractor, it really, it was devastating for them, for everything that had gone wrong. They are very happy to help us because they realize how bad the town was burnt by a poor design and constant poor performance from the design team. So I definitely think we can, I'll say, at least a month, because he's having some family issues health-wise, so I don't want to tell you next week or something, it might be a few weeks before we can really sit down, but we have an idea of what we think we can recoup.
We'll be back to you soon as we have that.
Mr. Alex wants to say something as well.
Mr. Alex, I'm going to preface your comment with the point that there is no action being taken here.
Okay, that's no problem.
Go right ahead.
Just that, we're talking, I've done a lot of arbitrations, been to arbitrations, done a lot of stuff, including this building. The magistrate always seems to lean on 50%. Go 50% one way or the other, and everybody shakes hands and walk away. So watch your legal stuff because you're not going to get more than 50%. You've got a little more to lean on of that building. That building was microscopic of this, except that you had a good contractor there. Here, we had a terrible contractor, so we were on our own, and we arbitrated it. And the magistrate, 50 percenter, and I've been on a lot of, in other towns, city of Boston, and the whole schmear, and same thing, you end up with a 50%. Down there, you were trying to make a purse out of a sousia. I mean, that building was terrible, and so was the site, but it's going to go against us.
Thank you.
It's actually the one upside to the fact that there's no arbitration clause, like my mind pinged on it because he's right. Arbitration, they always just cut it, whereas you go to a judge or a jury, you're going to get your actual award, but it costs a little more.
The architect is bonded and insured for errors and omissions, so realistically, that's probably going to be the avenue that'll end up happening.
Right, exactly.
They're going to want to settle before we go.
Right.
But they'll know too, right, that they're not going to get any benefit from getting slashed at arbitration.
Yep.
All right. The next item on our agenda tonight is to please consider the comments from the owner on North Street regarding renovation of his property. I do not believe he will be attending this evening. Yes, sir?
Excuse me. We needed to discuss about the closeout of the current police station as far as...
Yes, I didn't ask, didn't suggest that the board take a vote tonight, but we do need to discuss whether we continue with the building committee at all, and some members are not going to be here anymore, who are, aren't here anymore, who were on it in terms of the finalizing, paying any last bills that need to happen. We should give some thought to whether you want to have staff, delegate this, that to staff, or how we want to just close that out.
So, I'm sorry, could you explain that one more time? So we have a building committee in place, we need a building committee...
We had a building committee, but we, you know, we have a member who is no longer on the Board of Select, and we have the fire chief who's leaving Friday.
I replaced the member that was no longer on the board.
We voted to put Cece in that committee, so...
Oh, sorry. Sorry, yes.
Cece's there, we have interim fire chief who could take that spot in the short term.
So it's just a question, do we want to have the committee find, pay any final bills and review anything, or do you want to have staff handle it? That's, like I said, I had forgotten about that point tonight.
We basically, we have a signed contract with BC Construction, and they haven't been final, their payments haven't been going through, and we're legally obligated to pay them by the terms of the contract and the AIA. So we've kind of paused paying, so they're out, contracted monies that they've performed the work, but they're sitting on it. So are all the other subs, nobody's getting paid because I haven't gone to a building committee to have them approve of it. So my suggestion would be, is the work is completed, there's no more work happening, we know what the invoices are, we still have one issue that's outstanding, but my suggestion would be to authorize Blythe to sign and approve the requisitions that are still outstanding because I don't want to get us into another lawsuit by not paying our bills that we're...
You want BC to still be, like, in a...
We do, and it's, it's nothing, it's just strictly, they do a schedule of values and they do monthly requisitions. So we still have a 5% bond on part of the area, part of the job, but we have monthly requisitions, and we've had one from, I want to say it was June, no, I'm sorry, I want to say it was March or April, that I've been sitting on because they're a month behind, the architect has to approve them. So there's a couple of small change orders that have, the work's all been done, so it's nothing that we can change because it's done, but we just need to have the authorization to approve the payment. And we need a board involved, I mean, because I'm just going to say, this is done, do I have a motion to approve this invoice?
Okay, so first question, is the Public Safety Building Committee still meeting?
They haven't met since right, since just after I arrived.
Okay.
So it just, with the town meeting and election and all that kind of stuff, it just stopped.
Okay.
And Matt basically bird-dogged all the final details to get the building open and deal with substantial completion and pencil list. So there's no more money being spent, it's all done, so we could either have the committee meet to just catch up the paperwork or, or let staff handle it and bring anything to the committee that, for some reason, something did come up, or the committee could be tasked with working through this whole audit process? I mean, those are all options that maybe we want to talk about on the ninth, slightly earlier hour than now.
Okay.
Yeah, let's figure that out.
But does that mean that the invoice from March, April doesn't get paid, so that BC's out?
They've been out and they're getting, so I, I'm in constant contact because whenever there's an issue with a new station, we have a warranty, and I deal with them all the time, and they do, because I've had contractors call me because they're saying, we're not getting paid, and BC's saying it's because they haven't been paid because the money goes to BC, and then they have to distribute the money to all the subs. So there are a lot of people who are...
Temporarily authorizing?
You could authorize me to handle the most recent requisition and...
And then we circle back.
If it wasn't added to the agenda, were you able to still vote that?
I think so. I think it's within, I mean, the topic is on the agenda.
Police station.
I really don't think that that's an issue, but, because you're discussing the police station and you're discussing what's going on with the committee.
Closing out.
Paying a bill is a thing we do every day, whether or not we have even a committee that oversees something that the town does, so...
I just don't want to leave it.
And I'm not sure we get a committee meeting...
Like, if they're bullish on us, I don't want to have them not be quite so bullish on us.
No, I wholeheartedly agree. I just want to make sure that we're not fixing one problem by creating another one.
I would say, giving me the authority to pay the most recent bill on the table and talk about the fact we closed this project out with the committee in place on the ninth would be a good way to handle that. Like I said, we, the town pays bills all the time for things that have been done. It's still an obligation of the town, whether the committee approves or something else. So I...
This isn't a new bill, it's...
No.
Right.
Thoughts?
That's fine. You don't want to hold it to contractors?
No.
All right, so in that case, I would move that we authorize the town administrator to be able to close out the final invoices related to the police station.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.[1772.48]
Aye.
All right, we did it.
Maybe you can talk to George Cronin, maybe you can talk to George tomorrow about that as well.
I will see him, I might even just sleep over.
I know, I got a 7:00 AM agenda tomorrow morning. 7:00 AM is going to, 6:00 AM, so I have to.
All right, well, Agenda Item 14 is being passed over as the resident is not here tonight. Agenda Item 15 is to approve some warrants. I have a couple, so I will go first. I move to approve the warrants dated 6/4/2019 in the amount of $594,340.40, dated 6/7/19 in the amount of $788,202.95, dated 6/11/19 in the amount of $122,185.05, and also on 6/11/19 in the amount of $249,199.33.
Do you want to handle them separately or together, altogether?
Separately, please.
Okay, so, I second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. I move to approve the 6/14/19 warrant for $1,487,576.29, the warrant of 6/18/19 for $617,920.03, and on 6/18/19 for $1,890.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. And finally, do we have some minutes to approve this evening?
One.
Yes, we do.
May 29th, May 28th.
May 28th, yep, yep.
Got it. C.C., would you like to make the motion?
I move that the board approves the minutes of the May 28th, 2019 regular meeting, which were reviewed by me.
Second.
All right, no further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Blythe?
I have one last thing. I had a meeting yesterday with finance director and the town treasurer and our financial advisor about a refinancing of a bond issues that were done in 2011 to take advantage of the current marketplace. These were bond issues for the Freeman Kennedy School and for water. And the reason I'm bringing this up at this late hour is because it's a callable bond in the end of the summer and in order to go through the process, to go have a bid opening and put those bonds out there to be refinanced, the board would need to have a meeting to vote to approve the refinancing and then to award the bid. And according to the financial advisor, I did not know this until yesterday, our July 9th meeting is too soon and our August 20th meeting is too late. So, I know, so, questions are, co- options are, the other, we had discussed either August 13th or 20th, and at the time, either one was good, so I'm curious if either one is, if the 13th is still good and we just change it? I know the first week in August wasn't good for at least one of you.
I'm out, that's correct.
Yeah, right. So that's, that would be the easy answer if that works, and I just want to.
The 13th?
Instead of the 20th.
That's fine, I'm chaperoning a pony club camp during the day, which just means I.
I might come along to that.
Hooves and pack up ponies, but so I'm around.
I'm good to move the 20th to the 13th as well.
So let's just do that because otherwise it was adding a different meeting on a different date and that just seemed to get complicated. It should not, it's going to be a quick thing. The good news is because of the, the rates and the, the current environment, they're guessing that of about $9 million, we'll save about a million in principal and interest to call those and get it at a better price and, and we'll have Ann Marie and Todd here to walk you through it, but.
Very good.
Definitely didn't want to lose that opportunity and they just have to time everything.
Yeah.
So thank you for, for that, they'll be thrilled.
Very good.
You would want to come to the pony club.
I would. I haven't picked a hoof in a long time.
Do you believe that does it for this evening? Can I have a, Mr. Rosenberg?
I, I just have a question, I wondered if you have thoughts about the timing of a fall town meeting and timing for closing the warrant for a fall town meeting? So if, if you have something in mind, could you share it?
So we, you and I had talked about November 19th, which is the Tuesday the week before Thanksgiving, but I also understand that the middle school's not available.
But Freeman Kennedy is.
But Freeman Kennedy is, so question to the board is, do you mind switching destinations for that? Just curious. And then if that's fine, then I would turn my attention in the next week or two to some type of a schedule that we, you can kind of coalesce around about when we open it, when we close it, and all, and all of that, so.
We had fall town meeting at Freeman Kennedy two years ago?
Yeah.
Right?
Yep, yep, two years ago.
There's no issues with that, right?
No, the chairs are not as comfortable, but, right.
At our best.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying they're not as comfortable. That's all I said. And then I agreed with some other commentary about the chairs.
Not as comfortable available over at that school.
I'm just saying, they're not as comfortable. No indictment on your character, just that they're not comfortable as comfortable.
This space will hold about 300 people by law.
God bless us, we're never going to get to 300 people for a fall town meeting.
The last one, it was very, it was packed, it was a.
We probably had about, what, 150, right? 180?
Oh.